This October tenth, two thousand and nineteen, regular meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education is called to order. Present we have Ms. Pitko, Ms. Lieber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Mrs. Vitale, Superintendent Cummings. Mr. Asa will be joining us shortly. Ms. Jacobson, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, Mr. Peterson, our student representatives, Ms. Denny from Fairfield Ludlow, and Mr. Murphy from Fairfield Ward. I'm going to ask you to all please rise for the pledge. And Ms. Pitko, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
Absolutely. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, everybody. So I'm very happy that today we have our student representatives from Fairfield Ludlow and Fairfield Ward. I'm going to ask them before they give their school reports just to introduce themselves and just tell us a little bit about yourself, the year that you're in, any extracurricular activities, or anything else that you would like the Board to know about you.
Okay, so my name is Lila Denny. I'm a senior at Fairfield Ludlow High School. I'm on the Fairfield Ski Team, so I've been here a couple of times every year for that little thing after we win another state championship. I also work at Naughty Dolphin Pizzeria and eat way too much pizza.
And then hi, I'm Peter Murphy. I'm a junior at Ward. I'm the president of the Model UN Club and I'm on the debate team. Yeah, that's about it.
All right. Well, thank you both for volunteering your time and for being with us. You are definitely the high point of our meeting and it's nice to have students with us to remind us why we are all here. So, thank you for the introduction, and now who wants to go first to give the school report?
Okay, I'll go.
All right, Ms. Denny.
So I'll start with what's going on on the sports side. Tonight's a very big game for sports for both Ludlow and Ward as they face off in their first games of the season for both girls and boys soccer. Girls already took the win tonight and the boys are playing right now, but they have an, already have a strong winning record, so hopefully they'll have that same performance tonight. Ludlow is also wearing pink instead of blue tonight to honor Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Girls volleyball will also be playing Ward tomorrow and will hopefully continue their stellar undefeated season that they've had thus far. This weekend is also homecoming for us, which means that tomorrow the Falcons will be getting their school spirit ready with their annual fall pep rally. And then after Saturday's football game, we have a Tropical Paradise Homecoming Dance, which has been organized by the senior student government and is open to all upperclassmen and should be a really awesome time. On less fun note, the PSATs are coming up on Wednesday, so for all underclassmen, that means taking those, and then upperclassmen, like seniors, have the opportunity to either do college visits, or job shadowing, or like personal one-on-one involvement with their applications, which is a really unique opportunity. Also, over the past couple of weeks, as we have done in previous years, many college admissions representatives have been visiting Ludlow from colleges all across the country to talk one-on-one with students about the college admissions process. And this is a really unique opportunity for juniors and seniors to get direct one-on-one time with the people who will be reading their applications. So we have a lot going on right now, but it's really fun.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy?
So, good evening. I'm Peter Murphy, and normally Ellie would be here with me, but she's at the soccer game tonight because she's on the soccer team. Sad that they lost, but hopefully the boys will do a little bit better. Ward's enjoyed a great start to the year and everyone's excited about what we're going to be doing. So, the first couple of months, we've had a bunch of activities with the open house. We had the summer symposium, and we had the start of activity periods, so our club started up, so that was good. The seniors had a college application workshop, and then we've also been having senior dress-up days every Friday. So we had Career Day last time, and we're going to be having a couple ones such as like Movie/TV Day, other stuff like that. Again, the PSATs are coming up next Wednesday, so the freshmen, sophomores, and juniors are all going to be having a lot of fun with that. But the seniors can go visit whatever college they want, or we have a couple workshops going on in the school. We also have the Fall Concerts on Thursday, the twenty-fourth, and Wednesday, the thirtieth. And then we have our homecoming on October twenty-sixth. Also, Ward TV has started back up again, and we have new episodes every Friday that are available on our website if anyone wants to check them out.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for our student representatives? Okay, and so you guys are welcome to stay, or you're welcome to go catch, I hear there's a soccer game that maybe you guys want to go to. But thank you, and we'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you. It was nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Public comment. At this time, we invite any members of the public who would like to speak to agenda items to please come forward. There's a three-minute minimum. We just ask that you speak to agenda item, maximum, sorry. Speak to agenda items only once. We will be taking public comment prior to every, any action item. Okay, seeing none, we are moving on to presentation two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen student data results. Ms. Gottesman, Mr. Cummings, do you have any?
Just real brief introduction. Ms. Gottesman is going to work with the program directors tonight to present. Unlike the last several years, we worked this year to focus the presentation in a shorter time span, but also to cover as much of the data as we could for both the Board and for the public. This presentation will be on the website, hopefully tomorrow, that would be the expectation. But also, I would say that if we do not have, if there's questions tonight that we cannot answer tonight, we will get those answers back out to the Board as quickly as possible.
Thank you. We had a few. They'll use you for a mention. Okay, we're going to put a PowerPoint up, so if you want to, thank you.
Mr. Vitale?
Thank you. Okay. I think you all have the PowerPoint in your packet, so you can follow along as we speak. I'm going to open up the, an intro to the standardized testing overview and then have the program directors speak to individual slides. Presentation goals. Purpose of standardized assessments are fair and objective measure of student achievement, an additional data point that can provide us with comparative information, and it helps identify problem areas in individual students as well as schools and curriculum. And what do we use the data for? Well, we use the data to evaluate the effectiveness of our programs. It's another set of data points to assess student performance, and it helps us reflect on our curriculum to identify gaps and redundancies. And we compare the data over a number of years to identify trends. Standardized tests support our district improvement plan by supporting high-quality teaching. It improves learning for all students, and it ensures that all students leave Fairfield Public Schools prepared for post-secondary success. Tonight's assessments will be reviewed, there, we have the Smarter Balance Assessment. We have the PSAT, Preliminary Scholastic Achievement Tests, the SAT, Scholastic Achievement Tests, the AP, Advanced Placement, and the Next Generation Science Standards Summitive Assessment. You'll notice, and Justine will speak to this, that this is the first time that the NGSS has been given to our students, so we're using it as a baseline. We have nothing to compare it to because it was the first time this assessment was given.
So, in the, I'm Walter Wickman, the Program Director for Elementary Mathematics, Science, and Enrichment. At the elementary math program, what we're looking here on the good news side of things is that there's been an upward trend over the past five years in all the grades. Grade three in particular this year was very strong. This is not a cohort group. This is last year's group of students that came through. Some of the areas that we're looking at for continued work is there's a slight dip in fourth and fifth. Statistically, not a big difference, but it is something to look at and to think about where we need to improve. And the cohorts, year over year, are a little bit inconsistent as well. So there's, this is strong data, but we're looking to continually improve it, and we have some very exciting work that's happening in our schools right now related to our whole SRBI process. So we're looking forward to continuing that work and diving more deeply into the areas that we need to improve.
Hi, I'm Dr. Paul Rasmussen. I'm the Director of Secondary Math and Student Achievement. I'll be talking specifically about the Smarter Balance for, at the middle school, and then I'll be transitioning over to the SAT, PSAT, at the high school. And as you can see on the graphs above, as again, similar to what Walter talked, we do see a very positive trend as we look at our five-year analysis. So it tells you some really good things of what's going on in terms of teaching and learning in the classroom. But I think there's always, we always look for areas for growth. For example, if we do like a short cohort analysis, we could do sometimes see maybe a dip in seventh grade if you follow the same group of kids from one year to the next and not, then we see back up to the eighth. So that's something that we are digging deeper into farther, but also we actually dig even deeper into some of the, what they call the target analyses. We actually, so for example, one of the things that we saw, especially in eighth grade, was like an area of improvement is specifically right around the Pythagorean theorem. But we keep on asking ourselves a question, why? We teach it and other different things, but when the, what the teachers say is, well, they're not remembering it. So that tells you a lot of various instructional strategies that we can do to help students keep, stay connected to past topics and concepts and skills. So and a lot of this work then spills over to kind of help, when we look at some of our achievement gap, these are the same type of instructional strategies. When we dove into those, we actually saw we are improving in terms of how our high need students are doing, especially what we can relate this to a lot of our spiraled work that we've been stressing, and it's been showing, so that's where you see attributed some of these positive growth. Specifically to the PSAT/SAT, again, we're seeing in terms of all, mainly the three years, the tenth, the eleventh, and also the SAT and the eleventh, we're seeing a positive trend up in terms of the overall performance of our students at the high school. If you look over to the left part of the graph, SAT, PSAT nine, that, last year was the first year that we implemented. And actually, you look at it, that actually was one of our highest achieving groups of students. So we're excited about that, especially from the transition work from the middle school up to the high. But again, we continue to go through and we focus on spiral learning, constant retrieval. That's what really kind of guiding our work as we move forward. Next is over to English Language Arts.
Good evening. I'm Lynn Holcomb. I'm the Director for Elementary Literacy. I'll talk to you about our areas of strength. At first, we've got, our listening skills were quite strong across the district in third, fourth, and fifth, and that has not always traditionally, statewide, has not been an easy subtest. The children need to listen without any visuals, and then they need to come back and summarize and find evidence and reasons within a passage to answer questions. So we were quite strong there. In writing and revising for content and structure, that's also a challenging subtest, and that's where students need to use what they know about author's craft to either adjust to revise a consistent passage that's in the test. So students need to know what does it mean to revise, to make an introduction more interesting? What does it mean to, what kinds of elaboration should I be adding to my writing piece? So that's a, that was a great strength to see. We also were strong in third, fourth, and fifth in determining theme or central idea, often a challenging thing to do. So we're doing well there. We just noticed, if you look at the graph, that we've got consistent growth from grades three, four, and five. And that helps us to look at our curriculum and note that when the text is more difficult, when the tasks are more difficult, our students are able to continuously grow across the grades. That was great to see. Areas for continued improvement, analysis within or across literary texts, in third and fifth especially. And what that means is our students, as we saw, did really well with determining theme and central idea maybe in one text, but when they are given multiple texts and they have to synthesize information across multiple texts, even, we expect that even a little bit in third grade, that's an area that we want to work on. So we've gone back into the curriculum to see if there are places in the curriculum where we could expand that, make it a bit more rigorous where students have to look across texts and think about author's purpose and so on. Word meanings, language use, definitely an area of need that we need to think about K-12. We're talking about here vocabulary development, multiple meaning words, nuances, figurative language, all of that work that we know. We've, Dr. Swengler and I have been talking about this since the day I came, about how to improve our curriculum in that way. We have analysis within and across informational texts makes sense if the students are having difficulty with literary texts and analyzing across texts. They are probably going to have that same issue with informational texts, and we did notice that. The great thing about this is that by fifth grade, our students are really, have really improved. So it's third and fourth that we need to strengthen, and then by fifth, the kids are able to do that work across text. Last but not least, editing is an area that we absolutely need to address, and Dr. Swengler and I again have been talking about this, we share an office, we talk about this an awful lot. The grammar piece to our curriculum, you've already started with your rubrics and the conventions piece in the middle school, and then we are working with upper elementary along with middle school to start to see where, what do we need to do, and then bring it down to kindergarten, the work in grammar, punctuation, and spelling. So the information, we were able to get an awful lot of information from this, but not really many surprises.
Good evening. I'm Jen Swengler, the Director of Secondary LA. Thank you. Again, just to echo a little bit of what Ms. Holcomb has said, we see some areas of improvement in eighth grade this year in our SBA LA benchmark. Eighth grade continues to slowly increase, meaning mastering. Other target areas of success this year include our students really did well on the research and informational writing components of the SBA. So what was lovely to say is while we saw some areas of improvement necessary in elementary, as students are moving through the system, they are growing in their literacy skills and content areas. I attribute a lot of this to my colleague, Dr. Paglis, as he's worked incredibly hard with the Social Studies Department around infusing authentic literacy skills within his core curriculum. Another component that we know we need to work on in the secondary world is within literary text. So we continue to wonder how to increase our efficacy when identifying central themes within our literary text, and how to use authentic domain-specific vocabulary when describing author's craft, and also pulling evidence from text to support our main ideas within our writing. So within our work within this past year, one area that we've already targeted and started to move forward on is realigning our core instruction to a progressive rubric, which is built from the work that is already done in elementary. So we are continuing the foundation work that's been so important in grades K through five up through six, eight. It's really helped with aligning our expectations for our readers and our writers, and what's really great is that students are exposed to similar vocabulary within instruction K through eight. I'm also going to speak to you about the PSAT/SAT. As Dr. Rasmussen mentioned to you earlier, there have been some changes to the PSAT/SAT since most of us took it. It is not the same test as it once was. So we're looking at two main areas with also some subscores that were not evident in previous PSAT/SAT data. When I look at these scores, the first thing that pops up to me is that they are flat, that we're not seeing the increases we hope to see over time for students. And that is something that we have started to address through some of our target work within our schools and the analysis of our data around not only the main, the main expression of ideas, words, and context, but also the subscores of standards of English conventions and words and context. So as we continue to grow in our ability to reach the needs of all students, we really would like to see additional growth as kids move through the system between the PSAT eight, nine, to all the way through to PS, to the SAT and eleven.
Greg Paglis, Program Director for Social Studies and Student-Centered Learning. This slide shows one perspective or one way of looking at our five-year achievement data for our Advanced Placement exams. This data does come directly from College Board. The total AP students on the top, that number represents how many unique students at our high schools took AP exams for the past five years. I think as everybody knows, success on AP exams is defined as a minimum score of three out of five or higher, which represents the score point that research finds predictive of college success. Between two thousand and fourteen and fifteen, in this past school year, we have increased the total number of students taking exams from six hundred and seventy-nine to seven hundred and fifty-eight. That's an increase of seventy-nine students over the past five years. And we've increased the total number of exams given from one thousand three hundred and thirty-three to one thousand five hundred and forty-three, an increase of two hundred and ten. This shows that we continue to increase the access for students taking these college-level rigorous courses and the exams, and we have done so while maintaining a very high success rate. As you can see, eighty-six percent of students that took AP exams in two thousand and nineteen received a three or higher. So not only are we increasing access and maintaining a high level of success, we're also increasing the number of students who scored a three or higher on multiple exams. This slide shows the number of students that scored a three or higher on at least three exams over the past five years. In two thousand and nineteen, we had three hundred and nine individual students in our high schools that scored three or higher on three or more tests. This was up from two hundred and forty-five in two thousand and fifteen and two hundred and fifty in two thousand and eighteen. In fact, the story is actually much more impressive than that. Of those three hundred and nine students, seventy-three of them received an average score of at least three point two five on all of the exams that they took, and had scores of three or higher on four or more exams. Further, a hundred and one students received an average score of at least three and a half on all of the AP exams that they took, and scores of three or higher on five or more of those exams. And finally, ten students, that's five at each high school, were awarded as National AP Scholars as they received an average score of at least four on all of the AP exams that they took, and had scores of four or higher on eight or more exams over their time in high school. That's very impressive. So again, taking, sorry, taking these slides together, it shows that we're increasing the number of students taking exams while maintaining a high level of achievement, and students are doing very well on multiple exams.
Hi, good evening. I'm Justine LaSala. I'm the Program Director for Secondary Science in K-12 STEAM, and I'm going to talk to you tonight about the new Next Generation Science Assessment. This is, though Connecticut adopted the standards in two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and nineteen was the first year that we received scores back from students on this assessment. And so this is why we only have scores for this year. We don't have any sort of comparative looked. Going forward, I think it's important to recognize that this is an assessment of students' ability to think critically about science concepts. It's not really an assessment of their factual knowledge. But several years out from now, it's going to be really important for us to look at trends over time. Right now, we're just looking at a baseline, and it was really a pilot assessment, pilot test. It's hard to read into it too much. Going forward, the work at the district level for us is going to be to continue to align our curriculum, our instructional practices, and our assessments to these new standards. Thank you.
So the next steps. We're going to continue to build capacity of our administrators and teachers to deepen their understanding of the curricula standards and the Fairfield Public Schools' academic expectations. We're also going to continue to support our teachers to align their instructional practices to the curricula standards and the FPS academic expectations. And my final comments would be, we engage our students here in challenging curriculum, which allows them to fulfill the vision of the graduate, meet the FPS academic expectations, and perform well on the standardized assessments. Our instructional approaches are consistent with best practices in teaching and learning. I have a final editorial comment that I'd like to share with the Board. My observation in the short time that I've been here is one that I think is very important. Mr. Cummings has built himself quite an impressive team of program directors. I've worked in several high-performing school districts, and many of the, many times, our curriculum people work in silos or work independently. This team, for the couple of months that I've been here, I have observed them working collaboratively. They're collegial. They are well-versed in content, and the conversation is ongoing every day. More importantly, they engage that work with the principals and, as well as the teachers. But the fact that the conversation is going on in this district, K through twelve, with teachers and administrators, is very impressive, and I am pleased to work with this group. And it's only going to be an improvement and success for your students. It's phenomenal. So I'd like to congratulate the Board for allowing this group to work together on an ongoing basis. Very impressive. Questions? You're welcome. Lights? Camera? Oh, thank you.
To the Board, questions? Mr. Dwyer?
One question. We are about to enter our budget season. You're already in it as staff because that's what you do in the fall, and we actively do it in January. With all of the results of these tests and discussion of them, are there any additional resources that are needed that have to be addressed through the budget process? Or it sounds as though just have the staff keep doing what they have been doing, but are there any additional resources that are needed to help implement any of the changes that are suggested?
Yes. Especially around professional development, I think that's very important that our staff get continuous professional development and instruction in the strategies that we're trying to have them use in the classroom. But specifically to the program directors, they would have individual needs, so anybody want to address that? Yep, sorry, yeah.
Just one thing I would like to bring forward. The, we're doing a lot of professional development in the area, we're doing a lot of professional development in the area of elementary science this year, and we are reviewing resources at this time. We have not selected any, but that is something that we are entertaining and will be looking forward to.
Side training?
I can speak specifically for math. It's something that we've actually started already this fall. We've actually started our program review, our K-12. So this is something that we will be, I think we'll be coming back to you in December. We'll be talking about some of the things that we've been noticing and then start to make future recommendations, which could include, we have nothing definitive in terms of recommendations to help support the teaching and learning that's going on in the classrooms for math. So nothing specifically right now.
For English Language Arts, I thank the Board for their former support and hope for their continued support around finding really engaging texts for kids at multiple levels. So as we continue to grow forward, our curriculum in the secondary world, asking for further support for book club titles, whole-class novel titles as appropriate, enriching our classroom libraries, the better the books that we have in the hands of our children, the better the opportunities for rich instruction around literacy and literature. So I thank you for your continued support.
Ms. Pitko?
I have a quick question that I think, actually, to our superintendent. Was there any thought to giving the PSAT in eighth grade, or is that too much with Smarter Balance testing?
We really hadn't seriously considered it. I think we'd be concerned about the amount of testing that would, and when we give the test, we want to be able to make good use of the results. tests, we want to be able to make good use of the results. That might be a bridge too far.
Ms. Lieber.
When you were originally outlining sort of the goals of standardized testing, one of the things you guys mentioned was how it provides an opportunity to reflect on redundancies in the curriculum. And I had never thought of that before, and I was wondering if you could expand on how these tests help you do that analysis.
So for example, something that Lynn and I have been spending some time, Ms. Holcomb and I have been spending some time talking about are English Language Arts conventions and, you know, as we call it, grammar usage and mechanics. So what, simple explanation, you know, once you learn and master the art of a comma, we should be able to move on from the comma. So what I hope we can do is to get into some richer discussions about the way we use our language, the way we use it well, and continue to grow our ideas about, once we hit mastery on specific skills, recognizing that in kids and understanding through scope and sequence what we would move on next. Now, that's not to say that everyone's going to have commas by the third month of fourth grade. However, we can hope that we have a progression of skills that we can better outline within our curriculum that supports kids to grow on that continuum.
Mr. Peterson?
One of the areas that you say is an area of focus or need in grades three through five is editing for grammar, punctuation, spelling, and writing. These are foundational building blocks. I hear what you're saying about wanting to move on from the comma, but it feels like you're getting a warning that you're already not doing enough with the foundational aspect of the English language. I feel this a little personally, and I've heard from other parents that this is a hole in our curriculum. So I'm a little concerned with you looking at the next step when the foundational step may not be being addressed to the degree that children need. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. So there are a few things going on at this point that I've been here since June, and we've been talking about, what are the gaps? We know that we need to work on our editing skills in writing. We know that spelling is an issue, that our grammar instruction is not as consistent as we want it to be, right? That's, we've seen that. I've been looking through all the units of study to look for those either redundancies or places where we might teach something and then let it go, and then it comes back again. So I'm looking for that consistency, K-5. And it has not gotten past us that we, this is an area that we really have to seriously focus on. Now, what I have done is started the process of looking at a phonics, a foundational phonics program for at least K-1 right now to get those foundational skills down, to beginning spelling especially, but of course, in reading and writing. Along with that is a handwriting component, so that our handwriting is consistent. We have a consistent program across the district, all integrated in our phonics instruction. So our language arts specialists are involved in studying. One particular program right now, we're having a phonics units of study day on October 29th to go a little deeper with that. And I, along with that, I find that's a really important piece that we need to put in there, along with what are we doing in our writing instruction for editing on a daily basis? Are we asking kids to go back into their writing? If we're teaching a particular skill, are we asking them that day to go into their writing and look for errors, you know, verb tense errors and so on? So that's something we're working on now. Our curriculum review is next year, but I'm not waiting. So we understand the concerns, we have those concerns, and we're trying to address them as quickly as we can and as thoroughly as we can.
I appreciate that, and I know that the curriculum is really where ultimately this will be. But this as a, you know, as diagnostic tool, it's just, when I see something that confirms concerns that I've heard elsewhere, that's the reason I'm putting so much emphasis on it. But thank you for your thorough attention to the matter.
Mrs. Max Canelli.
Shocker that I'm jumping on the same topic. It's, one thing I very much appreciate, and obviously well aware that you're very new to the positions and you're, you know, again, I'm sure these results were very eye-opening for you and helping you to chart a path forward. I can't speak more strongly than Mr. Peterson did in terms of, that's true, yes, I could. But I'll leave that unsaid regarding the absolute deficits in our children's education. There are things that aren't, and they are in the curriculum documents. Because when we reviewed those curriculum documents, I looked very specifically for that spiraling of grammatical skills, that as they increase in age and maturity, that they can handle things on more sophisticated levels. So they're referenced in the documents. It's not happening, and rubrics aren't going to fix that. Whether, you know, the integrated instruction or whatever, and that's where I really hope that there is a PD focus for, because there's no question, I mean, English, more than any other subject, is assaulted with all the skills it needs to do between listening, speaking, reading, writing, solving moral problems. Everything is in, is expected and can be tossed into that curriculum. But this has been left out. And you, again, I'm so glad that you made the reference to consistency, because so much of it depends on which teacher did you get in eighth grade. But it also can be because it's that teacher's strength and not a peer's strength. And this is an important piece. The amount of editing I'm still doing for my kids in college is, it's tiring, because they want to edit at 11:30 at night. I do not. But it's, I do appreciate your attention to that. I know we'd had a whole movement of, my kids were raised on all the sight words all over the walls of their elementary school, and then we moved away from that, and spelling didn't matter, and we paid a price for that. So I do appreciate, I just, at least two of us, you know, very, very supportive of that being a renewed focus. And I think we always know that if something is a renewed focus, something else gets gypped on a little bit of time, and that I don't know how to tell you what to do. But the foundational skills are vital, you know? Math, if they don't know fractions, you can forget about calculus A-B. Well, English, they do need this, because when you're deconstructing what authors are doing, you have to be able to have this vocabulary. So rant over. But, but thank you. And please know that that's definitely something that several of us are paying attention to, because it's something the parents understand well when their kids aren't getting sufficiently. So thank you for that. One thing that said, a lot of this was referenced to, you know, that these tests provide you with information. I was wondering if you could give a few more concrete examples in a few departments, maybe, of just what exactly is the impact on PD? Because we're about to have the calendar talking about PD. It is absolutely something that is not convenient for an awful lot of working parents, and I think the more specific we can be to how this time is being spent to improve the instruction for their children, I think is worth a few minutes. But I'm not going to point out any specific department.
Before you go, I want to just make a point to this. I thank you for raising this question. I think one of the things that the individual program directors, I want to frame something around their responses. We have, we've learned, just like with students, teachers are just like students, that going in for, even when we've got a full day to devote to a subject, that often isn't enough to actually change substantively the practice that's needed to happen. So when, when we describe the PD focuses of the individual departments or grade levels, these aren't the old one-and-dones, the drive-by PDs that we might have experienced earlier in our teaching careers. This is a, this is an opportunity for teachers to engage in work, using student work as samples of what they need to focus on. That's the evidence of whether they, what they taught was achieved or not. Then they deconstruct why or why not that wasn't achieved. And so there's a repetitive process to this that's necessary for the, for the need and the skill set to become ingrained into instruction. So I just want to put that out for everyone ahead of time, because it does take repeated listenings, viewings, and most of all, getting your hands dirty to get the work to change to the points that both of you raised, even around a topic as, certainly as important as what you've raised. So with that said.
I'd like to speak in particular, to use math as an example, the elementary level. I'm going to use SRBI or Intervention Process, but when I discuss that, what I'm really talking about is what is happening in core instruction, and then how are we intervening for students who may be having some difficulty. What I'm really excited about this year is really doing the deep dive and looking at student work. We're triangulating data against test data points, but looking at student work and looking at how do they measure up with the standards. We're bringing in a lot of parallel language that's used with the language arts and the way we look at students' reading, so that there's a lot of dialogue back and forth. We are also bringing groups together around looking at the standards and student work and the data in collaborative teams, so that there's a lot of discussion about how to intervene. It isn't just teachers in isolation. And it cycles regularly throughout the course of the year. So it's not just one drive-by professional development on, here's some intervention strategies, or here are some instructional strategies to help challenge some students, but it's ongoing discussions that occur as teachers move through the course of the year. And again, with the Bridges Resources that were purchased, three, we're in our fourth year now. Teachers have become familiar with those resources. We are now utilizing those resources even more to help frame the conversations that we're having at the table, because they do reference all of the standards that we need to have at particular grade levels. They've been very helpful documents. So again, thank you to the board for that support.
So some of the professional learning work we're doing this year is focusing specific on small-group targeted instruction, which while it's not directly on the grammar mechanics, I won't say situation, but situation, it is providing our teachers systems and strengths and how to analyze student work, similar to what Mr. Wakeman spoke about, and then to offer small-group targeted instruction that's meaningful to what they're showing us that they need within their work. So I appreciate, and I wanted to say that, I appreciate so much of what you said. You went right to the heart of my love of language when you were speaking, and I thank you for that. But being able to diagnose, use diagnostic more tools to say, what do our kids truly need in their writing? What do they need in their writing thinking? What do they need in their reading thinking? And how can I set up systems within my daily instruction to assure that I'm going to better support kids where they are within their continuum? So a big focus this year is helping teachers grow in that ability to confer with kids, both individually and in small group, and to set up small-group systems within their classroom, so that we can support kids at a more targeted level.
If I can ask two follow-ups to that, plus a few others. First, well, when we talk, and Mr. Wakeman actually made me think of this, you talked about triangulating, but are we, I assume we are, but are we continuing to take these standardized test results across the departments and comparing what trends emerge from that compared with the trends that emerge from our own internal formative and common assessments, so that we're continuing to refine their predictive value and ability to help us hopefully intervene sooner before the standardized test is being taken? Is that part of this process?
Yes. Very much so. So based on some of the feedback that we got from, or the data that we got from this, we actually revised our opening-year assessments for ELA within the middle school to better target what we're looking for within mastery of the content area standards that we showed weakness in within literary terms. So we do it in a way that's responsive and responsible, so we don't always feel like we're tossing out the very overused analogy of that baby and that bathwater, you know, but we want to make sure that we're using the data in a meaningful way and always in that state of constant improvement and evolution.
And are you generally using the predictive value of, so if you have a seventh-grade battery of scores and you get the next year's class, are you helping them based on the patterns of the previous year, or are the teachers getting access to the sixth-grade scores? Because that, needless to say, involves an investment of time for them to have the time to look at that, because these weren't their students when they earned those scores. Which one governs their-
It's actually both.
Okay.
Like, for example, we did a lot of work over the summer, working with the school improvement teams, kind of looking at, really when we're getting down, it's the targets. The targets were the richness of what the data is, because it's not just a percentage of students meeting benchmark. That doesn't really tell us anything. But if we, we just keep digging deeper, and the targets of, especially the smarter balance, when teachers are looking at that, they can actually look at their own classes from last year, how those students did, and this is how we set up the online reporting system. They're going in, they could see how their students did over multiple years, say, that they had in their class. And we have recently set up now all the teachers, three through, three through eight, they can now see how their students that are currently in front of them did the prior year. So it's a powerful tool that we, we've constantly been working on professional development of not just kind of interpreting the data and how do you make it actionable in your classroom. So ultimately, and the teachers and the building administrators and our program director have really found that the target data is where, where we, actually, where now it actually goes from just, okay, the percentage of students meeting, to, okay, oh, wow, this is what the students are doing great on, or hey, this is where they're struggling at. Now, now we kind of, the shift goes to instructional strategies. So that's where the evolution goes, from just data itself to the transition over to, what are we going to do about it?
I would add to this, just quickly, that the board's support of a $50,000 initiative in the PD, the district PD account in the current budget, allowed us to bring in school improvement teams over this summer. The Dr. Rasmussen went out and met with each of these teams as they came back. He reviewed with them their data, and so they began, they worked with the data that they, the most current scores to prepare their school improvement plans, and then were therefore ready, when the full staff returned in August, to share and disseminate those results and actually begin to act on them immediately. So it was really the, I can't emphasize enough, because it's going to show up in the next budget as well, that that got the head start this year. That made it happen.
Okay, thank you. Just two more questions. First, one topic that has come up quite a bit, it did when we were talking about graduation requirements, and whenever we get these scores, is the idea of explicit test prep. And I don't know if there has been any conversation around that, because obviously now we're looking at this as a graduation requirement, at least for the SAT. And I think about something, again, obviously I know a little bit more about the evidence-based reading and writing, but in terms of words and context, that's something students get better at when they practice the SAT words and context questions, because it's not a vocabulary issue. You know, you look at the practice test one that just got handed out to all the juniors, and there's a word in context, the word is want. And I was having to tell my son, you can't look at the question, you must look at it in the passage. He assumed he knew what the word meant, and he did, but he needed to know the, you know, 18th century version of it, of the word, so, which it was being used at. So that's something they're only going to get either at home or as something that teachers are instructed or sugge, I don't know, because it's not something I'm comfortable wanting teachers exactly to do. So I'm wondering how, what's the professional conversation around that?
So one of the areas we start, is am I okay? Yeah. One of the areas that we started speaking around last year, and Dr. Rasmussen and I will continue this conversation this year with the secondary folks, is when you get into the question stems themselves, you know, we don't want to see, equal to, I think, what you're saying, is we don't certainly want to see, this is your PSAT prep question for the day, children. You know, we don't want to see this, right? But what we do hope to grow is our teachers' capacity to look at the questions and say, what is the thinking that kids need to engage in in order to answer this question? So what you're talking about is close reading in context and paying attention to context clues, and not being able to just maybe skim, glean, and answer, because context in this situation is going to impact meaning. So that kind of thinking is good for all readers, not just when you're answering test prep questions, right? Readers are saturated with information every day these days, some good, maybe some not-so-accurate. So that's a life skill that we value well beyond PSAT, SAT, that we want kids to be able to read within context. So knowing that that's the target skill, it moves it away from simply test-prepped to a transferable, higher-order thinking skill, where we're applying it to cross-text, cross-day, cross-situation. So I think having teachers be assessment literate, to know what types of questions are being asked, and to understand what kinds of thinking kids are going to have to do, better prepares them to identify within daily good core instruction where that's happening and maybe more explicit or purposeful in that delivery.
Okay. And then my last question was about our high-needs learners. You know, what are we learning, and the rest of my questions that I submitted, I'm finding if I can get email answers, but that was one I did want to follow up on, is that what have we learned in terms of, maybe if you could tell us one strategy that hasn't achieved success, and what are we looking for in this coming school year to do differently? Because obviously, you know, that's key to, you know, reducing that achievement gap, to helping these children succeed better. I'll just leave- I'll just leave that out there. What is something we are targeting this year for that group?
Right, again, I would like to just go back and discuss that, or share with you that whole conversation around the SRBI or the intervention process. It goes beyond, it's for all students. So whether students have been identified as having special needs and/or just a student who may be struggling with something, the, it's really taking a deep look at the standards of where the student's actually performing, and what are the next steps that those students need, and what are some of the patterns that we're seeing in classroom instruction. And teachers are coming together and actually having conversations, not just within a classroom of students, but across classrooms of students, and starting to identify what are some instructional strategies they might be able to use specifically for those particular kids. If they start falling behind, what is the path that we need to do to bring them forward? Again, it's part of that cyclical process and the regular conversations. Teachers come back and continually revisit that and have conversations about that, those decisions that we made, how effective are they? Are we showing growth? Are we closing the gap? And if we're not, what else can we do to shift our practice so that we are closing the gap? So that's the part that's really, I find, exciting about the work that we're engaged in right now.
In addition to some of that, working very closely with our special education colleagues, Mr. Mancusi is here. Sorry, I turned away from the microphone. Mr. Mancusi is here. But to continue to grow our relationship between core and also students who need additional supports, some of that work around, around reading and what we would like to see between the cohesion of intervention and core instruction, super important and high on our priority list. Additionally, the board supported us last year and continues to support us this year with working with Professor Liz Howard from the University of Connecticut on PSYOP, which is the Sheltered Instructional Observational Protocol, which is to support our English learners. Last year, we had a cohort of teachers go through and practice working with these eight instructional components within their core classroom. We plan on bringing in an additional group this year to continue that work with Dr. Howard, and also to revisit the first cohort, to see how that work is being implemented within classroom practice, and to identify additional areas of need for teachers and support them through that planning process.
Thank you.
Ms. Jacobson?
Really quickly, I know NGSS, you don't have all of the results. Is that just the one metric you were given, is the broad number? And I'm just wondering if, when those are available, if we might be able to get somewhat of a more in-depth analysis of earth, life, the engineering pieces, and just how that shook out for us?
Yeah, there's a little bit more information around students' performance, around practices within each disciplinary core area, life, science, physical, or science, we can get that for you, but I will say, they're scoring the same across the, all three. Because the most important piece is the practices piece, because it's really more of an assessment of students' ability to think critically about science concepts than it is about an assessment about science facts and science knowledge. So, but we could get that for you, absolutely.
Okay, thanks. And I remember last year, Mr. Rasmussen, that you had mentioned for the SAT that hearts of algebra tended to be an area that you were going to try and focus on a little bit more this year. I was just wondering if that improved at all from last year, or if you still see that as a?
Yeah, that is actually probably what was our, our growth area, especially, because especially when we've been talking about maintaining skills, because heart of algebra is really the end of pre-algebra, beginning of algebra I. So it's, but when it's tested as a junior, that's the farthest removed. So we've been, that's what we've been talking about, spiral practice, keep on, that constant work of helping students maintain the concepts and skills back, all the way back from algebra I, et cetera. So that's, that's why we were.
Okay, so you thought it got better this year, then?
Yeah. It was our highest SAT performance to date yet, so it's, it's been a celebration for teachers. So related to the, to the work then, that they did, and also what the students did in the classroom, so.
Okay, great. And I'm just wondering, not for answering now, but just in terms of as we look at middle school programming, scheduling, whatnot, I'm just wondering how we're, the vertical alignment and the trend, that transition piece between, not so much for math, because we already have accelerated and double accelerated, but we don't for science or English, and just how that analysis from going from eighth to ninth, and some of that is being addressed a little bit. And it's not something I'm looking for an answer for now, but I'm just wondering if that piece, in terms of our transitions and levels, in the other areas besides math, will be looked at?
It is, yeah. Excuse me, it is being looked at, yes.
Okay. And that was it for me.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you all for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're moving on. Update, environmental testing at school field sites. We have Mr. Olson from Tyon Bond. Just to give us an update, I know that the board had some questions, just in terms about the timeline, some questions about some of the testing results. Mr. Cummings, I don't know if you have any comments you want to make before we?
Only quickly, that I would like to thank Mr. Olson for being here this evening to address the board's questions. Earlier this afternoon, we did get some testing results from the playscape to the left of Jennings Elementary. Unfortunately, those test results indicate that that playscape is going to have to remain closed. Mr. Olson can certainly speak to this in more detail and more knowledge than I can, but the fundamental issue at both those sites is the, is the railroad timbers, the timbers that were used to keep in the mulch. They were, the old pressure-treated materials, and therefore they've caused some leaching into the soil, it appears. So the town, as it is doing at other sites, any place that the town has tested, the town is working with Tyon Bond to develop remediation plans, and the timing of that will be, is still to be determined. So I will be getting those results out to the Jennings community tomorrow morning.
Mr. Olson, do you have any opening remarks that you would like to give to the board, or you just want to take our questions?
I could give a quick overview, and good evening to everybody. I'm Jim Olson from Tyon Bond, I'm a licensed environmental professional. The town brought Tyon Bond on board in August to assist them with this issue across town. We've investigated over 60 different areas at school and parks across town, including doing a number of sites, seven schools for the Board of Education, we tested 19 playgrounds. So we've done quite a bit of work, and it's a three-step process where you come in, you basically, you know, investigate a site, and then you get those results back, you compare them to prescribed remediation criteria that's issued by the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. And once we get that data, we determine whether or not we have to do additional investigation to delineate the extent of the problem. Then we, we look at and we say, you know, what do we need to do in the interim to control exposure to users of those fields? We do that in consultation with the Connecticut Department of Health and the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection or DEEP. And then after that, we, if there, if there are constituents or contaminants above cleanup criteria, we develop remedial action plans for those sites. So it's a multi-step process. There's a lot of sites we're working on, and there's, there's sites that are prioritized. I know your school sites have been prioritized. So we've gone through, and we've been, you know, like I said, we've investigated over 60 different sites right now. We've evaluated interim measures to control exposures, we're going with Department of Health and DEEP. And we're planning for remediation, and we plan to start remediation at Gould Manor Park this week. And after that, we're going to lead into some of the other priority sites, including some of the school sites. So that's kind of where we are in a nutshell.
All right, Mrs. Graber.
Hi, thanks for coming tonight. So you said that Gould Manor testing, I mean, the remediation is going to be this week?
Correct, starting tomorrow.
And it's just going to take this, or, well, actually, no, tomorrow's Friday, I'm sorry. We usually have our meetings on Tuesdays, so I keep thinking it's Tuesday. So it's going to go into next week as well?
The contractor says it's going to take 10 days, 10 working days to complete the remediation.
Okay, so basically, we're talking about the, almost the end of October?
Correct.
And, and so in that period of time, there'll be no remediation done at any other sites? You're just focusing on Gould Manor?
That is correct. The town plans on using the same contractor for all of the sites. There, I believe the contractor was issued a purchase order for Gould Manor Park, and the contractor's been provided with the, the information for the additional sites in terms of the remediation plans and the volumes of soil, and the town's waiting for a cost from that contractor to do those, and they're going to address this through a change order. The contractor is Red Technologies.
I'm sorry, what's the name?
The contractor's name is Red Technologies.
Okay. And so, but now the remediation plans were put together by your company?
Correct.
So is there any way we can find out what those plans, have they already been developed, and now it's just a matter of everything being remediated? Or are you still working on additional plans? Like, for the schools, obviously is what I'm referencing.
Correct. Yeah, we have, we have some plans that are completed, and we provided those to the town. Some sites are a little more complicated, we're still developing remedial plans in consultation with DPH and DEEP. So, but yes, they are, plans have been prepared.
So some plans have been shared with the town. Have they been shared with the district as well?
I'm not sure. I have not sent those, I sent them to the town.
Okay, well, I guess then maybe through the chair, to the chair, and to Mr. Cummings, perhaps if a conversation could take place with the town leadership, just because if there are remediation plans that are out there, I think it would be really helpful for them to be posted somewhere, or for information to be shared with the school communities that are going to be having remediation. You know, if there are actually plans in place, I was under the impression that there were plans, but if, if something's already there on paper or online somewhere, I think it would be helpful, unless there's some reason not to, to have it be shared with the school communities, just so they can understand what, what's going to happen.
Yeah, they were just completed. And so what we have, have you seen the Gould Manor RFP?
Uh, yes.
That was posted?
Yes.
So that has an excavation plan for the park, it's a map showing the excavation limits, and also has technical specifications that are part of it, that tells the contractor how he has to do his work, or?
Okay.
So for each additional sites, we're basically having an excavation plan, but we'll use those same set of specifications, Gould Manor Park. So probably the only thing you're missing are the excavation plans, which is a map.
Okay, yeah, just because, I mean, I know that Gould Manor, I mean, each one is unique, I think, you know, is my understanding from looking at the, the maps of the schools that did have sites that needed to be remediated. So yeah, that was just a question I had, if we could.
Two, well.
And I had one more question after that.
Mr. Pabatous, do we have a, a timeline of what school site is next after Gould Manor? If Gould Manor's first in the town, we cannot do it simultaneously?
We, we're working with Brian Carey from DPW to set up a timeframe for when Jennings will be done. Jennings will be the first school site addressed once, for, I don't even know yet if Gould Manor has to be completed before they begin that. I'm actually going to be, Brian Carey and I spoke this evening, he's going to be sending the plans over, the excavation plans over, and him and I will be walking Jennings tomorrow to address it and figure out what the timeframe will be on that project.
Okay. Ms. Graber?
Well, and I get to just follow up on that. So, so the earliest that Jennings would be taking place would be the week of the 28th, then, assuming that Gould Manor does take a full 10 working days?
We're hoping not, but we're hoping to be able to run it simultaneously, but?
But if we can?
Yes.
Then we're, we're looking at the week of the 28th for, just for Jennings, for both playscapes and the field area, or?
It's just the playscapes at Jennings, the field area is kind of part of the playscape.
Got it, of it, right. Okay, so, but both playscapes?
Yes.
Okay. And then after that, theoretically, each one of the other schools that have, I mean, I know some of them, my understanding is they're fairly minor.
Yeah, like McKinley will be a minor, quick.
Right, right.
And the big one will be Mill Hill.
Okay, thank you. And then the other thing, I don't know if any of the other board members checked their board mail. At 7:01, we had an email from the RTM District Four members, who are at their own meeting tonight. They had a specific question regarding the Stratfield Playground and the concerns there. I guess would be, maybe I'll just be easy if I just read it, it's fairly brief. The given reason, oh, so they said, they'd like to have the representative from Tyon Bond explain the basis for not remediating Stratfield School Playground. It is our understanding that the given reason is that the contaminated soil found at Stratfield is considered safe by Meg Harvey, as it is under one and a half to two feet of wood chips. We would like to clarify that only wood chips are an effective and safe barrier to ensure the children of Stratfield Schools can safely play. We would like to clarify and ensure Tyon Bond is aware that there is not a rubber barrier between the wood chips and the contaminated soil, only landscaping material which decomposes over time. We're under the impression that under, this is, they're under the impression, so perhaps you can help with this impression, that under the RDEC standards, which applies to playgrounds and recreational facilities, the proper remediation is to make the contaminated soil inaccessible, would be to ensure the contaminated material is more than four feet below the ground surface. Can the representative from Tyon Bond please clarify what regulations were used when consulting with Meg Harvey? And just reiterating, which is something that we've heard from members of the public as well, that they're just concerned that the one and a half to two feet of wood chips is simply not enough. So if there could be some clarification on that, I think it would be really helpful for that, that community.
Yes, for Stratfield, and let me give you a little background on that site. So we investigated it, we went through the wood chips, and there was a, like a filter fabric landscaping barrier below the filter fabric. And then we sampled the soil underneath. When we sampled the soil, we noticed there was pieces of asphalt in there. And then, so that prompted us to look at some of the historical aerial photographs of that school. And that school dates back, I believe it was like 1929, it's a fairly old school. If you look there, there was an old asphalt service, surface there years ago. So what we're probably seeing there is remnants of an old asphalt surface. And asphalt in itself is full of pHs. You go to any asphalt, it's very high in pHs. So the pHs we're seeing there are probably from this asphalt there, that's been there, you know, for, for many years. So, and if you recall, I said earlier, that it's a three-step approach. One, we look at, we investigate it. Two, we look at what interim measures we need to protect users of that playscape. And three, what are the long-term remediation plans? So we've done the investigation, and then we're in step two, in consultation with DPH, we both agreed, or our opinion is that the, the wood chips in itself are a protective barrier, along with the filter fabric underneath it. The third step, remediation, that hasn't, that hasn't been determined yet. We're still working with DPH and DEEP on the long-term remediation needs for that playground.
Can you, sorry, can you clarify that? Because I'm under the impression, we were told, that the long-term remediation plan was leaving the mulch in place, ensuring that that depth remain intact through periodic and multiple inspections throughout the year, and that once that school came up for a full mulch replacement, that we would look into making sure that there was a barrier there. So just to confirm, right now, you're actually saying that you're still looking at an alternate remediation, other than just, because that completely conflicts with what we were told at the last meeting, what I understood from the letter from your company and the letter from Meg Harvey. So this is, just to be clear, I'm asking this now in public, because this could potentially create a lot of confusion.
It is a confusing process, and so what our letter said is that we, we concur with Department of Health that the two feet of mulch, or the layer of mulch there is a protective means to control exposures. We didn't say in our letter that that was the remediation. Now, there was a question before, and you know, what is remediation on a site? Okay? So if you want me to answer a question, let me just explain that a little bit.
Great.
So a remediation can be, for this particular contaminant, it can be excavated in the soil, it can be placing a barrier there, such as what's there, the, the mulch, or three, chemically treating it. And I don't think chemically treating is a viable option here. So I think your options are either one, is digging it up, or two, putting a barrier there.
I didn't understand what three was.
It was like, you can do certain chemical treatments for?
Treatments, okay, I didn't understand.
Chemical treatments. I didn't hear the word treatment. It's really applicable for this situation. So, you know, that can be the long-term remediation means, by putting a cap there of these wood chips and maintaining it, as DPH has indicated.
Okay, so what we're saying now is that Gould Manor is the only location out of the identified locations needing some sort of remediation that is moving forward, and that Stratfield is actually still on the list for exploration of further remediation, which could wind up being, leaving the mulch as is with the barrier, or other processes, including excavating the soil?
Correct. And maybe a little more background. To remediate a site, you essentially need to be in a remediation program. None of these sites are in a remediation program.
Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, so, so basically, as an LEP, I'm authorized by DEEP to sign off on certain sites that are in remediation programs. You know, none of these sites are in remediation programs. And the way you get into a program is either one, by order from the state, two, you're in what they call the property transfer program, which is an applicable which is an applicable to these sites. Three is a voluntary remediation program. Or four is if you trigger a significant environmental hazard when you have a very high concentration that's reportable. So, these sites aren't enrolled in a program per se. I'm hired as the LEP, and what I usually recommend in these kind of situations that you consult with DPH and DEEP, that everybody agrees or concurs this is the long-term remediation approach for these sites.
So, who is making the determination that we are either not or going to consider enrolling or voluntarily enrolling or petitioning the state to enact a remediation program? This is clearly out of the board and apparently the public school system's realm. So, who is responsible for this?
That would be the owner of the sites, the town.
The town?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, to date, has the town taken steps to determine whether we're going to go down that path or not? And if so, what are the benefits of being in a program versus doing it how I understand we're doing it now outside of a program?
To answer your first question, you know, the town has consulted, as well as myself, with DPH and DEEP on the, you know, the interim measures and the remediation requirement. That process is ongoing. We had a call yesterday with DPH and DEEP. DPH has been very involved all along the way and DEEP. You know, it's been a little slow, but we had a call yesterday and we agreed that we would share remediation plans with them for their comment. And then, you know, the difference is, the only program that probably would be applicable to these school sites you can enroll in would be the voluntary remediation program. But that would require me as the LEP to say, your entire site complies with the remediation standard regulations. So, that would require me to investigate the entire site.
Can you give an example of what that would mean?
Well, it would mean you would have to investigate the, you would have to do, the site would have to go through like what they call a site assessment process. So, instead of just focusing on like the fields or the playgrounds, I would have to look at the site in its entirety to say, you know, I have to look at your tanks. I would have to look at your barriers around the building.
Let me cut to the chase. What is the benefit of being in a program versus not being in a program? Is there state funding? Is there grants? Is there something, like what is, what's the point of being enrolled in a program if there's no financial benefit to it?
You know, it comes about quite a bit in the commercial world when sites are transferred. If an entity's buying a site or a bank is lending on it, they want some assurance that the site is in compliance with standards and is clean. If a bank has a foreclosure on a site, they're not going to be stuck with a contaminated site.
So, it's basically getting DEEP further involved, in essence. And it's getting them to ensure that they are signing off on it or whatnot. Is that what I understand? Okay. So, one of the things you just said has caused me pause because we had a couple instances, one when the first selectman and health director, Sands Cleary, were up here, and then a supplemental, or secondary meeting, when just Mr. Cleary was here. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, I was under the assumption that DEEP and DPH were not necessarily heavily involved and that they were telling us that they didn't really feel that the issues we had were alarming or that concerning, and that their involvement was because at the request of the health director and Ty &amp; Bond, they were getting involved, and that in fact, they probably wouldn't be involved unless we were asking for them. So, when you say heavy involvement, is it because of those requests from the town?
Yeah. I recommended to the town that they involve DPH and DEEP to get some, at least some state involvement and assurance that the, you know, the actions we were taking were, you know, were appropriate.
Okay. And just to the chair and to the board, I have several more questions on this. Do you mind if I keep going?
Can I just one clarifying question?
Yep.
Just on this point of having pulled in the state agencies, it was a little bit circular that I'm hearing in terms of going forward with remediation or not. You're saying that no one's making us do it. For us to be in a remediation program or anything, it would be voluntary. If we don't get in that, whatever remediation we're doing is determined by the town, the town which is going to resort to your recommendation and the state recommendation, and we're right back where we started. So, how would we, for example, with Stratfield, be proceeding any differently than how we were 2, 3, 4 weeks ago? Which is that we're simply leaving the mulch in place? I understand that the idea being that it's safe for those children to be on it now, or at least that's what we're being told. But who would be taking the step of saying, no, given time, given next summer, we're actually going to do an excavate, either an excavation or put down that rubber barrier? Who's going to be saying that? Because all the town is going to do is to come back to the experts, as they should, and the experts are saying, we don't need to do that. So, in what way do you cast any doubt on what we've been told is what they're going to recommend? That question made sense to me. I'm not sure if it did to anybody else.
And I think that, we're the Board of Education. We are not professionals. We are looking to you for guidance and advice. The decision to test the playscapes was not made by the town. It was made by the superintendent. If you told us that we should not let children on those playscapes, we would have done it, as we're doing at Jennings. So, don't tell us what you think. We want to hear. We really are looking for you, that if you say that you should not, you should close the playground, we'll close the playground. If you're telling us that the mulch is enough of a barrier and that the contaminants, the asphalt that's in the soil, there's really not, we should not be concerned about exposure, then that's the situation. But we're looking to you, we're putting our trust in you.
I understand.
Just, as we're saying, we're going around in circles and...
It's a confusing process. And let me just, let me just address that as, our opinion is, and we concur with DPH, that the wood mulch is a protective barrier and it controls exposure. Remediation ultimately is a way to control exposure. Okay? There's several ways you can come about that. You know, you can dig the soil up, or you can leave the mulch in place. And again, it's our opinion that mulch is a protective barrier.
Okay.
So, if that's the case, why are we even, why don't we close that file? Why isn't that file closed? Why are you sitting here? And again, as the chair said, please understand, I very much appreciate the fact that you're here because we're hearing information that is contradictory to what we've been told by the town. And now, I feel quite honestly misled on some of this stuff. So, I'm not happy. It has nothing to do with you. But if the mulch, if the state and Ty &amp; Bond feel that the mulch is satisfactory, why is that file still open?
Because we want to involve DEEP and get their agreement that it is.
So, the letter from Meg Harvey, who I was told it went all the way up to the commissioner for verification that she could state that.
Right.
If her letter and everything isn't enough, what have we been doing? Because I've been relying and I've been telling my constituents and Fairfield Public Schools families that I support these plans and I supported opening Stratfield because I was told by the state, by DEEP, right? By the DPH that it's safe. But now, we still need to go to them, pardon me, for a, we still need to go to them for a final sign-off before we close that file. I'm just, and again, you said it's a confusing process.
It's a very confusing process, and I'm trying to make it as clear as I can. But, you know, DPH and DEEP are two different departments.
Understand.
You know...
I work in public health, so I get it.
Okay. So, as an LEP, and then when you're not in a program, I try to do whatever I can to get our clients, you know, some kind of assurance at the state level, since you're not formally in a program. And that's generally some kind of concurrent, concurrence or letter. I mean, you ultimately want that as a town that, you know, it's not just me saying it as an LEP. And I try to get DPH and I try to get DEEP on board to agree with it if you're not in a formal program. So, we've gone that far with DPH on some of these sites. I'm trying to get DEEP on board too.
Okay. So, sorry, Mr. Jacobson. I just, let me go here, please. So, we have Gould Manor Park that has been identified. Can you elaborate and give us your opinion? Because we really clearly don't know anything now. What, from your experience, because this is what you do, in a situation and scope of this magnitude, whether it be smaller or not, right? Is it normal for a town with this many sites needing attention, even if some of them are minor, to just use one contractor? Like, why can't we be doing Gould and Stratfield, or wherever it is, or Riverfield Field? Why can't, if those sites are so minor, why do we have to use this one company to do it? Is it because of a financial savings? I mean, because if that's the case, then, okay, that's a reason. But I just, I'm a little flabbergasted as to what the delay. Because what I'm worried about is we are a month and a half away from December in ground freezing and stuff. And yes, stuff can still be excavated and everything. But I was hopeful that this was all going to be handled and remediated before the winter, so that come the spring, everything's good to go and ready to play, ready to run. So, can you answer to that?
Sure. I mean, I think, you know, like I said before, Gould Manor Park will take 10 days. They'll roll into those other sites right after there, right after that. They're fairly minor. You know, I think, you know, another 10 days should address all those other sites. They're fairly minor compared to Gould Manor Park.
With the exception of Jennings, is that correct? Because we don't have a plan for there yet, right?
Yeah. Jennings is a little more involved. We're still developing a plan for that. You know, can work be done concurrently? Yeah, absolutely, if they want to get another crew out there. You know, we haven't been asked that yet, but certainly if...
So, the town made the decision to hire one contractor, the RFP. We don't, I don't know whether there was multiple, maybe only one came back. I don't know.
They got a number of bids for Gould Manor Park, you know, and I think they got some competitive pricing. Actually, I think it's quicker, rather than to go out to bid again for another contractor for the additional sites, is to use RED Technologies and to, you know, use those same rates for these additional sites.
So, we haven't actually bid for those other sites yet?
I know the town has presented the information to RED Technologies for pricing, and they're waiting on that right now.
Could I follow up on that particular question?
Yeah. Mr. Dwyer?
Yeah, go ahead.
My understanding is what you just said is that it'll be quicker to deal with the same contract and use change order pricing rather than go out to a public bid on each site.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just to add to that, that was discussed a little bit at the last Board of Finance meeting where they were concerned. The mobilization fee, as I understand, for some of these things can be like $7.500. So, they want to try to minimize that in some ways by not stopping starting.
Understood. Thank you for clarifying that. So, can you confirm, as far as remediation plans for the Fairfield Public School sites, which sites actually have a plan? As Ms. Gerber asked, which sites on Fairfield Public School property currently have a remediation plan and will be ready to go for this change order or bid?
Sure. We have a plan for Jennings.
Can you clarify for Jennings, what, because you just said we don't. So, you're talking about the original field portion, not the...
For the playground area. We have a plan for that.
For both of them?
Yes. That's pretty straightforward. I mean, we have a small amount of soil that needs to be removed on one playground that's impacted with arsenic, and then the arsenic-impacted wood timbers.
Okay. So, we, Mr. Cummings, have you seen a remediation plan for any of these?
No, we haven't.
Okay. Can you, piggybacking on Mrs. Gerber, can you ensure that we get these plans immediately, please? So, our superintendent of schools knows? I asked the health director to make sure that building administrators, and I think it might have even been, I actually asked the first selectman and the health director, when they were both here, to ensure that building administrators were fully aware and part of the remediation planning process. And I was told flat out that that will be done. And so, if our superintendent doesn't know, the building administrators don't know. So, if we have a remediation plan for a school, they need to be involved. And so, please make sure that that happens. So, to clarify Jennings and where else?
I'll just go down the list right now, the sites we identified that need some form of remediation. For Mill Hill Elementary School, there was some pH-impacted soil found along this ADA ramp. That one's a little more complicated. We need, you know, input from DPH and DEEP on that, and we're working on that. For Borough's Park Soccer Field, we had, we found one sample with some asbestos in there, and there's a plan in place to remediate that area. Jennings Beach Playground...
Can I clarify? You were just interested in schools, right?
Yeah. I mean, people watching probably want to know this because they're not getting this information. But for tonight, I'd like to...
Excuse me. When was this decided? When did this information get put together?
These are things I've been discussing with the town.
And so, in terms of formal plans, when was this in place?
It was within the last week. I emailed them with some plans.
So, they're getting, and now they're finding out the company to do the work, and they have that ready to go. I don't want to start this grand conspiracy that everything is being kept secret and let's start another fight about this. Let's be calm and neutral and rational and stop looking for a fight.
I'm not looking for a fight.
No one's...
Yes.
Let's stay calm.
And I'll caveat to say that Gould Manor Park was done a couple of weeks ago.
All right. But to Mr. Dwyer's point, I do want to...
Yes, school property.
This is a very big issue and will take a lot of time. So, I do want to focus on our schools because our top priority is making sure that we know that we're sending our kids out on schools that are safe and would like to know when we can open them to get the kids back on. So, if there's any, and I understand it seems like things are being finalized this week. Do you have a timeline in terms of when we're going to get the plans for the school sites and when remediation can begin? It sounds like we, it's going to be at least probably 2 weeks if we're waiting until after Gould Manor, realistically.
For the school sites, it really just boils down to the 2 sites I mentioned, the Jennings Elementary School and the Mill Hill.
So, the others are still on to be determined?
The other ones, we've already investigated them and they do not need remediation.
What about?
Ms. Gerber?
And you know what? No, just a comment. I take offense to Mrs. Max and Canelli's comment because I asked, and I just brought it back up, that I wanted the school administration involved. That's my point here. There's no grand conspiracy. There's no fighting. I want to make sure that moving forward, the building administrators and the superintendent of the schools are well aware of what's going on on their property.
That's fine, except that that information is brand new. It hasn't been kept secret from everybody. No, Gould Manor.
Mill Hill and Jennings have been developed.
Who's running this meeting?
Take a deep breath.
Can I just ask a question?
You may. We are going to do one question at a time.
There's 2.
To Mr. Ace's point, he did ask that as remediation plans were developed, that's building administrators be notified of the plans.
And be part of the plan.
Be part of the planning. That was, look in the minutes, it was stated at the very first meeting when this was addressed to that board before us.
And I'm addressing public school properties.
I agree with you. I understand. I just, let's just take the emotion down a little bit. I'm going to go to Mrs. Gerber, and then I'll go back to you to finish your point, Mrs. Gerber.
Well, I'm just kind of piggybacking on that. So, you said that the only school plans are Jennings and Mill Hill?
Yeah. And I'll clarify. Those are the 2 we have, you know, school sites we have.
Right. But there are other school sites. There's Osborne Hill.
Correct. Let me just finish. So, those are the 2 school sites that, one, we have a plan in place. The second one, we're still discussing with DPH and DEEP. And then, if you get to the playgrounds, there's a, these are the number of playgrounds that where there is contaminants detected over the standards that are now, where exposures are being controlled with wood chips. And, you know, based on our consultation with DPH, and we're in agreement with that Ty &amp; Bond. So, generally, exposures are controlled at those sites right now. So, we do not, you know, right now, remediation's not planned.
Okay. Could you just specify what those sites are, please?
I did provide all these sites to Mr. Papa George here on September 11th. And I'll just go down through the list here. So, we had, where we had exceedances was at McKinley, Stratfield, the Ludlow High School Courtyard, Dwight, Holland Hill, and Jennings. Dwight, Holland Hill, and Jennings.
Okay.
I mentioned before with Jennings, since it's not under wood chips, we have an exposed soil right on the edge of the playground, we have the wood timbers, that's why we have a remediation plan in place for that one right now.
Okay, but that's still, there are some fields at schools that my understanding was there were going to be, have a remediation, Osborne Hill and Riverfield.
Yes.
So...
And there's still the black tarpit.
I'm just trying to get some clarification on those two sites as well, because we did get the information about the playscapes, yes, that, I know, and I guess now I'm a little confused still about the whole Stratfield thing, but to go back to the other thing, we do have two fields that we were told were going to require remediation.
Yeah, if you, you mentioned Osborne Hill Elementary?
Correct.
We did, we did not have any exceedances there, any issues at that school.
By the baseball field?
What, the softball field, baseball field, yes, there were, we were told there was.
There was a drainage area.
By the third baseline.
Sorry, let me just get, there's so many of these sites, it is, try to keep... Are you talking about this one right here? It's not an exposure issue. Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, we didn't find any exceedances of what they call the direct exposure criteria, which is like a, an exposure ingestion, so I don't know where the confusion came about of that, but...
And I'm sorry, that was for Osborne Hill?
Correct.
What about Riverfield?
Yeah, Riverfield, let's see, let me just go to my map here.
There is an area closed off there currently.
Yeah, Riverfield is, we didn't have any exceedances there. We're, we're, we did additional sampling there, and statistically evaluated the data, and determined that it was compliant.
I, I'm...
It's confusing, so...
I'm really confused, because we were told that was one of the areas that did have an exceedance, it's still, part of, that area is still covered.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's confusing, so what happens, remember back before, I said, we, we went initially, we did some initial samples, right? We'd do like three samples on a school, we'd, we'd look at it, and that site initially had an exceedance, but under the, under the investigation and cleanup regulations, you're, and as part of the way you investigate a site, you do more samples, because three samples is not going to really tell you the full picture sometimes. So we went back to that site, and we did a number of additional samples, we did approximately 20. And what the regulations allow you to do is to statistically evaluate the data in its entirety. So you look at all the data together, you do a statistical analysis, determine if it's compliant with the cleanup criteria, and it was.
So what's going to happen with that area that's still covered in black?
It's, 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 technically, it's complying with the regulations.
Mrs. Gerber, can I ask a follow up?
Mr. Asa.
Yes, so just to be clear with Riverfield, I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying about the supplemental testing and everything. The problem I have is that a release from the town, and on the town website, originally when this all surfaced, it said that while the exceedance were relatively low, they were above the RDEC standard, and that Riverfield Elementary School and Jennings Elementary School would require remediation. So now, to be clear, what we're saying is that there is no remediation needed, because further testing was done, and even though that there's still a site that is elevated over the RDEC standard, we're now going back on what was told to, to us and the entire town, and I, I thought, I, I do remember this conversation, I thought someone saying that it could be as simple as covering it up and sodding it, or digging up the soil, but we were told that that was going to be done, so now I'm really confused.
You know, I, it's not something I said, but, you know, I think it was said that the sites are going under further evaluation, and further valuation is doing additional sampling and analysis.
So what about the original site that was above the RDEC? We're just dismissing that because the surrounding soil is clear?
Yeah, it was very, very mildly over the residential standard.
The town told the school system they were going to remediate it, and my kid goes to Riverfield, and I drive by it all the time, I was there today, and the field is covered in a black tarp, it's a small area, I'll give you that, I'm not arguing that. But the Riverfield community is under the impression that that small area covered in a black tarp that's had caution tape around it for a month or more, was going to have something done. And if you tell me that you're going to dig up an area the size of this table, so be it, you're the expert, or the state's the expert. But now I'm being told that nothing's going to be done, so does that mean that Mr. Cummings can call Ms. Roxby tomorrow and tell them that the kids can run on top of that black tarp, or is somebody going to go out there and remove the black tarp, and now all of a sudden it's safe?
I'm telling you that, that the soil is, is in compliance with the remediation standard regulations for that site.
I'm going to stop here.
Mr. Dwyer?
I, I think what Mr. Asa is bringing up is that we may be in technical compliance with the remediation standards, but the town has said out of an abundance of caution, let's go beyond that. And so perhaps what needs to happen is for our superintendent to communicate that philosophy, and say, we would still prefer to get a remediation plan for whether it's a table size, or whatever the size is, and, and proceed in that direction, irregardless of what the state standards or professional standards might be, that out of an abundance of caution, if we find it, let's fix it. And, and so I'm wondering if, if that was the original approach, where, where that got lost in all the technical reviews?
Um, as your LEP, I'm here to advise you on what the regulations require.
That's what I understand.
Those regulations have many, many layers of conservatism built into them, so I think what's there is protective. I mean, I, I can't comment on perception and people's feelings and things like that, I mean, my job is to do what's, what's prescribed to me by Deep as a, as an LEP.
Yeah, no, and I, I accept that, I think that he is representing your professional standard and opinion, and if we wish to, out of an abundance of caution, to go beyond that, as we sometimes have done in writing curriculum, we've gone above and beyond common core state standards, and I think in this instance, we want to do the same thing.
Can you clarify "we," because the town said they would fund it. The town said they would fund Riverfield, so if we decide that we want it done, are, are you suggesting that the town not pay for that now? Or we still stick to the plan?
I, I think you're getting into the weeds, I think we ought to, we ought to ask our superintendent to contact the town, and to continue the conversation to get back to that original philosophical statement.
Ms. Pico. You had your hand up, Mr. Peterson.
I, I just, maybe Mr. Cummings can answer this, get a clarification about the, the path in the Ludlow Courtyard. My recollection of that conversation was that as long as the kids stay on the, on the, on the paved path, it's fine, and that there's no mulch, there's grass, and that we would tell kids to not eat their lunches on the, on the lawn. But what I'm hearing from tie and bond is that there's no remediation plan for that space. So I, unless my recollection is mistaken, I, that seems like a, absolutely a place we should have a remediation plan.
Our understanding was that for the current use, as long as the students stayed on the blacktop, they would be fine.
We're, we're talking about children, though.
Right, but the blacktop served as remedial, remediation barrier, because it would prevent direct contact with the soil.
Right.
And that, that town, or the town with its advisors, would develop a remediation plan for the courtyard itself, whether that would consist of a mulch barrier, or something else was still to be determined, and that we were going to wait on that till it was at an opportune time, with the school being out of session, to, to, to take that on, because it would require transport of something through the building, whatever that would be.
But in any event, it's, it, it can't be, if that's the case, listed as a site that needs no remediation, correct?
Correct.
Did you say earlier that it was a site that needed no remediation?
Can I just clarify?
If, if I'm wrong, I just, this is my understanding, that I just, I want to make sure that that is this area that gets remediated.
I want to just say that we go forward on that information, so we're, we're at a point of comfortability, saying, we can do this, we're waiting on that. And, and to Mr. Dwyer's point, that comfortability just can't go away, right? When we hear that suddenly something else can, something else, the metric changes. The thing that very drove, that drove this very thing around the playscape was making sure that people were comfortable sending their kids to school, and that we were protecting them, if, if the metric changes under our feet, I, I find it difficult to explain to parents that the, the value system changed, and therefore suddenly everything's okay. I find that very difficult to, to bring forward.
Mrs. Max Connelly.
At this point, we have definitely heard contradictory information. There's multiple parties at work on this, hard at work on this, updates that we're not fully aware of. What I would request through the chair to Mr. Cummings is that between Mr. Cummings, Mr. Angeles, whatever a distinct type group could do, if we could get a narrative update, site by site of the identified places, where we are, what this timeline is going forward, what's getting addressed, what has been retested and now no longer needs to be remediated, is tarp being removed? If, if we could have site by site updates on exactly where we are, I have, kind of feel like staff needs it as much as we need it, and the public certainly needs to hear this, of exactly what's going on for the school sites, that the town takes care of their own sites, but that we, just in the course of the last half hour, have been more confused than we should be, and I'm not hearing definitive answers in the room at this point, so I'm not expecting this tomorrow, but I would hope maybe within a week, we can have a clear message, a clear narrative, site by site, what's being done, what needs to be addressed, what's the timeline, is what I would like to request.
May I add to that?
Ms. Pico.
What I was going to say originally, but I thought for sure would be covered, is specifically to know if and what remediation plans will be listed for Jennings, Mill Hill, McKinley, Riverfield, Ludlow High School, Osborne Hill, Holland Hill, Dwight, and Stratfield. If they exist, or going to exist, what exactly is going to happen? Because frankly, I'm really confused, and I think we just really confused our public, so I would like that as soon as possible.
Yes.
Just because I feel like there is a lot of confusion, and I don't want to leave families out there for tomorrow, are these areas that are cordoned off currently staying cordoned off, or are they being reopened?
We won't open anything until we can be sure that, we've only opened the sites that we've been told the current barriers in place are sufficient.
Okay, so based on this new information, nothing has really changed right now, those cordoned off areas are going to remain cordoned off, kids are not going to be going on them, we're going to take a deep breath, we're going to figure out where we're at, and then reconvene, get plans that are available, wait for others, but for, just so everyone knows, what's cordoned off will stay cordoned off, and kids will not be going on that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So the status quo is staying the status quo, and as we get new information from tie and bond, that information will be put on the website, the sites are there, the status of each field is there, and as we get remediation plans that we did not have, they will go on the website.
Channel all along has been, once we've got those plans, to communicate those out to the families directly, but also post anything to the website as we've done in the past.
All right, so, no, I, I think that we just, I know there's a lot of confusion, that information came back that we didn't have, but I think just to kind of bring it back, that it's still relatively organized, and then the information that has gone out to the public has been accurate, from the information, at least from our point of view, the information that we had is accurate, nothing is being opened, based on the conversation that we had tonight. We have not seen the plans, as plans are put forth, they will go to the superintendent, we will ask Mr. Cummings to pass this along to building administrators, and when they are set to open the fields, they will open the fields and continue the conversation with the board and with the school communities. I want to go back to Stratfield, because I, that's really why we asked you here, you know, because Jennings, we knew that there was going to be an issue, our understanding was that there wasn't a plan in place, we've been asking for a timeline for Jennings, we were told it was not ready, I'm happy to hear that it is moving forward, I wish that we had multiple contractors, so that we could address all these things at once, but, you know, that doesn't seem to be the decision that was made by the town, and I understand the cost savings, but for Stratfield, to be clear, just to be clear, that the mulch there, this, the fabric there, based on your evaluation of the soil there, the layer of mulch, the information that was given to you, and by the state, by the State Department of Health, the Town Department of Health, we were told that the State Department of Health was in contact with Deep, you know, we waited a few days till they got their, you know, communication to us, that we can safely send children onto that playscape.
Yes.
Does the board have any questions specifically about Stratfield? Ms. Jacobson.
Thank you, so you had previously said, because as Mr. Asa had mentioned, that the last conversation about Stratfield was that that was it, like, that two feet of mulch periodically was, was the plan, but tonight it was described as an interim plan, and that a plan for further remediation at Stratfield will be forthcoming, or is already available?
You know, that's to be determined, you know, again, you know, we have the investigation, we're, the interim measures controlling risks, which we're in that stage right now, and, and the third piece is, are there long-term remediation plans for a particular site? And that's for the, you know, for the town to decide, and, you know, and as well as with input from the regulators, from DPH and Deep.
Okay, so, again, the town decides if we need to go further, not...
Well, correct, because remember, you're not in a program right now, nobody's asking you to do it, DP, Deep's not asking you to do it, you're not under order, you're not in a remediation program, as an LEP, I mean, I, I can't tell you to do remediation. My job is to say, you know, is to guide you through a program if you're in a program, and, and provide advice if you're not. And like I said, since you're not in a program, I'm saying that you should, you should control exposure, which you are, and then you should make sure you involve DPH and Deep, which, which we are, and then in terms of, you know, can that playground continue to be used safely with the two feet of mulch, yeah. You know, the decision to go in there and pull all that playground equipment out there, and pull all the soil out and spend that money, is for the town to decide, not me, and I really can't recommend that, because to me, as an LEP, I gotta say, is exposure being controlled right now.
And the only other option that you mentioned was, besides the barrier, was actually excavating it, that's the other option, because the chemical one doesn't work for that site, so excavating would be the only other option at this point, beyond the barrier.
Remediation can be capping, too, a capping.
Okay, because you had said excavating, barrier, chemical.
Capping.
What, so there's a fourth?
A barrier is capping.
Oh, okay.
And then excavating or chemical treating of the main, so you, I've done many, many sites where I've used caps to clean up a site, but that's with, if the site's in a program, and it's a prescribed cap, or you got input from Deep and DPH, you say, yeah, this is a remediation method, and therefore that is the final remediation.
Can you just explain capping, sorry, is that like a four-inch concrete, or is that a rubber, what is that?
It can be multiple different things, like a prescribed cap, under the remediation standard regulations, is two feet of soil and three inches of bituminous asphalt, or else four feet of clean soil, or else an alternative cap that's approved by Deep and DPH.
I thought the asphalt was just causing the pHs in the first place.
It is.
And your remediation plan is to put more asphalt?
That's what the regulations say.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a, a quick follow up to that, one question that a constituent mentioned to me about the, about the asphalt fragments, since these are hydrocarbons, is there a chance that they could leach upward?
I, I don't see that as a migration pathway, leaching up through wood chips, and they're under a filter fabric, they're within soil... under a filter fabric, they're within soil, they're tightly bound to the soil, I don't see it leaching up through.
What does the science say?
That's what the science says.
Thank you.
And, I guess if there is a, capping sounds a little extreme in some ways, like, would we better control exposure by excavating the wood chips and putting down rubber matting as, as kind of thought to be there in the first place? Would there be any difference between that and the filter fabric?
I think what you have there is sufficient right now, would having rubber there be better? I mean, is rubber better than filter fabric? Sure it is, but, you know, I don't, I don't think it's necessary.
Ms. Lieber, then Ms. Gerber.
So, I had this question 30 minutes ago, but Mrs. Jacobson just touched on it. Is our blacktop asphalt, through the chair through, Angelus, like, are our kids not playing on fields and playscapes because of potential contamination from asphalt, and instead on blacktops, which is asphalt? Is that what's happening?
Right, like if you took a piece of blacktop and tested it?
It would be many, many, many orders of magnitude greater than what we're finding on that playground, because it's pure pH, it's asphalt, and it really boils down to is that DEEP and DEPH considered asphalt, you know, a surface that's intact surface, where it becomes an issue if the asphalt's broken up into tiny fragments, and a kid sticks their hand in the soil and licks their fingers and it gets into their body.
So, like every time my kid has dropped a piece of gum on the blacktop and then like put it back in his mouth, that's way worse than what we're talking about, being two feet under the wood chips. But that's where our kids have been playing, this duration of time, to prevent them from being on the playscapes and fields.
You go along any roadway in Connecticut or any parking lot, you're gonna find PHs right on the edge of the parking lot in the soil.
I'm not saying this to make light of it, actually, it's like quite alarming when you really think about the contaminants we all live amongst every day, but it does bring me to another point that like, I think the public is also wondering these types of things, and to Mrs. Max and Canelli's point, if we could get some sort of summative of all of the school-related playscapes and field, and I don't want to be assigning additional work, but also a little bit of history, because all of these are different, and all of them are coming from different sources, it seems, or a plethora of sources anyways, railroad ties at Jennings, my understanding was Riverfield was dripping oil from likely a truck, asbestos some places, arsenic other places, and that I think is also helpful for the public to understand the variety of the contaminants, and also, this is part of living in a very mature community that has old facilities, not, again, not to make light of it, but just to add additional context to the conversation.
Ms. Gerber.
I really don't want to beat a dead horse here, but since you brought it up, with Stratfield, because I think what kind of got this whole ball rolling and opening up this whole can of worms was your statement that, well, you, the chips are fine for now, but there may be something later. So, I guess my question is, at what point will we know if there is something later? Is there a timeline for that?
Well, that depends on two things, what the town wants to do for the long term, if they want to just use the wood chips for the long term, if they want to excavate the soil, remove all the playground equipment, and there's also the possibility, you know, if DEEP ever, ever has any kind of requirement in the future.
Okay.
Which is, which is probably unlikely, but I can't, you know, predict what DEEP would require.
Mr. Papa George.
Mrs. Max Canelli.
Just one quick thing, you talk about DEEP coming out with new regulations, isn't in fact, part of the problem of this whole situation has been that there's industry standard, resident standards, but this whole idea of recreation standards, that they don't exist? So, that could be a possible future eventuality that would prompt a reexamination that will be long after we're off the board.
Yeah, DEEP's been trying to get recreational standards passed for quite a while, the original remediation standard regulations were passed in 97, and, you know, practicing in this field, you know, you have a residential cleanup standard, then you have an industrial commercial.
Right.
But a lot of these, these sites we work on, if you've ever heard the term like a brownfield site, right, like these underutilized sites, you know, you have vast areas of fill on these sites, and brownfields development, you try to integrate a lot of green within these brownfield sites, recreational areas, and then if you look at cleaning all these, these passive recreational standards, areas up to a residential standards, it's very expensive, and it actually, it's a disincentive to develop these sites.
Right.
So, what DEEP has been trying to do is come up with these recreational standards, which, and they do that in concert with DEPH, and we have been looking at that for these sites.
So, that would be something in the future that might cause action?
Yeah, if anything, you know, they'll be less stringent than the residential standards.
Right. Thank you.
So, just for, because we asked this question, well, what if we, what would the next, what would the alternative be if we determined that the mulch chips wasn't enough? And it sounds like excavation would be the alternative, would be to remove the playground and just remove all that soil.
Well, you could put a more robust cap system there.
Or a cap.
Rubber or concrete, or else, you know, stick with the mulch and have a maintenance and monitoring program.
Which is what we were, the plan that we have right now, rubber or, okay.
Yep. Mr. Dwyer.
The contaminants that you're talking about came from asphalt that was there a long time ago.
Correct.
I assume the asphalt was more than just where the playground is, when you looked at old photos?
Yeah, that's a good point, it's definitely outside the playground.
Right, so, so if we wanted to go beyond, then we would saying, whatever the area of asphalt was, let's excavate that entire area, pick up the asphalt, and then put in clean dirt, and then rebuild everything. Is that what would be required? Because if, if we don't pick up all of the asphalt, we're still going to get tests in future years that say, "There's a contaminant there." Am I following this correctly?
You're correct, the asphalt impacted soil is not just under that little playground, it's beyond that, but you gotta understand, too, that that could be a pretty significant cost ramification.
And I'm just pointing that out, because that's something that the Board of Ed would have to talk about in future years, as to whether they, how far they wanted to carry this.
Absolutely, and this would, this would hit our budget.
Just, Ms. Lieber.
So, so if we did something like that, we would put down clean soil to abut our asphalt?
Right.
Okay.
To abut our asphalt.
That our kids play on every single day.
That, right.
Yes, okay.
Are the cause of remediating the soil that is there.
Mr. Asa.
Just real quick, at our last meeting, there was a gentleman from the public that got up, and he was very passionate about the subject at Stratfield, and one of the things he brought up was the difference between Connecticut and New York regulations and numbers. Can you just touch on that briefly, just because there has, I have had several other people since then ask me outside of the board, and quite honestly, my answer to this point has been, I'm going by what we were provided by Ty &amp; Bond and Meg Harvey, and that we're in Connecticut and not in New York, and I don't know the reasoning behind that, but any elaboration on that would be great.
Absolutely. The way it works is the federal EPA sets overall cleanup standards for the nation. States have the ability to promulgate their own cleanup regulations, but they have to be as stringent or more stringent than federal regulations, and a lot of times, whatever makes it through the state legislature, you know, what people think or feel at the time, they can be more stringent, a lot of times they are. I haven't, I've done work in New York in the regulations, I am, I'm a professional geologist in New York, but as an LEP, I'm using what the state of Connecticut provides me as what they feel is protective for Connecticut, and it's not uncommon to see differences between states. And you mentioned before, a number of people mentioned about the summary of the sites, I certainly can provide that within a week or so to you. I know all this information is confusing, I apologize, but I think a summary, sorry, a summary might be, might provide some clarity.
For Stratfield, for the fill that was there, there is just concern with the julian pile. Based on your observations, do you think that fill from the julian pile was used at Stratfield?
No, you know, the julian fill, the indicator parameters there are, you know, the asbestos, which we saw over at Ghul Manor Park, potentially PCBs, high lead and arsenic, we're not seeing any of those things. You know, I know we've seen arsenic on some of the school sites, but, you know, we think the arsenic came off the wood timbers, which are pretty high, and also arsenic can occur naturally in Connecticut above the cleanup standard of 10 milligrams per kilogram, just for the rocks that came from their high-end arsenic-bearing minerals. But, no, I mean, from our observations and research of the, of the Stratfield site, looking at the aerial photographs and the previous asphalt that area, and the construction timing, it doesn't appear to be any kind of julian fill there.
Thank you. Any last questions from the board? Thank you for coming and answering our questions.
Anytime.
And I'm sorry if we got a little heated, I hope that you understand that we're really just trying to do what's best for the children that attend the Fairfield Public Schools. There's been a lot going on on the town side that we've tried to just stay removed from, and just keep our focus on, you know, doing the work, listening to the professionals, and moving forward. If you could provide some, just more information about, you know, we think it's from the pressure treated wood for the arsenic, there was a playground, you know, asphalt there, that would be helpful, and then we'll work with, you know, Mr. Papa George and Mr. Cummings about getting it out to the school community.
Absolutely.
So, thank you for your time.
Okay, sure, you're welcome.
Meeting with us. Does anybody have any last comments about this agenda item before we move on? Okay. Seeing none, approval of the Fairfield Public Schools student calendar 2020-2021, recommended motion that the Board of Education adopt the Fairfield Public Schools student calendar 2020-2021 as enclosed. Motion, Ms. Jacobson, second, Mrs. Gerber. There was one change to the calendar that was presented at the last board meeting. Ms. Jacobson, thank you very much for bringing up the high school orientation and how that would affect the calendar. We made some changes, and I will let Mr. Cummings just kind of give you a quick overview of when the new first day of school is being proposed.
So, essentially, we adopted the proposal that Ms. Jacobson presented, as is, we broke the three professional days that teachers go through at the beginning of the school year, over the course of the weekend, so two days prior to the weekend, the 27th and 28th of August, and the third day being the 31st, the last day of August, which would allow for the orientations for grade six and grade nine students to occur after the weekend. That moves the, that moved the first day of school back one day to September 1. It still allows four days of school prior to the Labor Day weekend, and it only pushed the last day of school back one day to the 15th. So, unforeseen, of course, in this is any weather, but it, it made the last week, the last two days of school half-days in the last week, and then, as we said at the beginning, I spoke with a few of the principals, and they thought that this opening, this splitting over course of the weekend offered some real possibilities to both bring the staff in and work on the professional learning that occurs on those first two days, turn the last day to a more student focus with the orientations, and then give students four days to get the year off to a start before the long weekend, which they predicted everybody will need. So, that's essentially it.
Any questions or thoughts about the calendar? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. I'm sorry, I missed you.
Just one thing, I don't know if it will make any difference to anybody, but for September 18th, where it says Rosh Hashanah, should it say, just to be specific, Rosh Hashanah at sunset?
Yes, it should, yeah.
Yeah, just because I don't want someone looking at this thinking we're ignoring that, because it is in fact the 19th. Secondly, I was just wondering if the idea of evening conferences on March 26th, which is a Friday, is something staff had any opinions on?
Their opinion was they were opposed to it.
Because I found that odd that it was a Friday, March 26th.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm missing you, the 25th?
March 26th.
Yeah, I think.
PM conference on March 26th?
That just, underneath the blurb, underneath.
I think that should say the 25th, it's a typo.
Oh, okay. Good catch.
Thank you.
Do we have to make a motion to amend that, or can it just be fixed?
I think we can just fix that.
Thank you, okay. And then just one last question, is if you can clarify the value of June 1st, and I apologize if this was a topic last time, I was trying to listen to the meeting while it was ongoing, I don't remember if that was asked.
I brought it up, June 1st is a, we tried that really this first year, well, we've had it for a couple of years, I think, but this, this past year, we turned it into the initial year and review for the staffs. So, what, it had great value in looking back at the school improvement plan as an entire staff, determining what went well, what needed to be improved for the following year, and then providing direction for the, those school improvement teams that I mentioned earlier this evening, to come together over the summer with real direction, so that, so much of our work is building, one, capacity among all of our staff, but two, making sure that voices are heard, it allows both those things to happen at a timely part of the year in order to get going into the next year. So, it helps bridge the gap between the academic years.
Okay, so I guess my point is, because I'm not a fan of the four-day weekend there, but the point being, the, there is a clear argument that there is an academic value to having it where it is.
I've, I've done a lot of things in my career, quite honestly, I think you well know, and one of the very few things that I've got unanimous approval for was the idea that we use this day for school improvement planning.
Okay.
This past year.
Right.
It was unanimous throughout the district.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else going to the public? Any public comment? Seeing none, back to the board, all in favor? Ms. Picko, Ms. Lieber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Gerber, Ms. Tally, Mr. Asa, Ms. Jacobson, Mrs. Max Kelly, Mr.? Mr. Peterson? Oh, it's unanimous, Mr. Peterson. Motion passes 9-0. New business district work plan update.
I'm really bringing this forward to see if there's any questions, but let me just make a couple of comments at, at the outset. First of all, as we've discussed in the past, bless you, this is the fifth year of the initially adopted district improvement plan. We are going to begin, as I've mentioned several times, we're going to begin after the first of the year, in earnest developing the next improvement plan with full intent of bringing it for, to the board for adoption in June of 2020. This, this last year of the work plan follows the model that's been used over the past couple of years. Its intention is to continue the work and be as specific as possible in the work strategies that we're developing or implementing this year. Continuations of work that has happened in the past, Dr. Swingler, for example, mentioned the PSYOP training that we did, we started last year and has continued this year, and is mentioned this year, but it also sets up the work that will occur in the second half of the academic year around building the 2020 to 2025 district improvement plan. So, that's, that's essentially it, we, there's really nothing new in this, and the primary focus is working on improving the instructional core, as well as safety, security, and facility improvements.
Mrs. Max Canelli.
Okay, a couple of questions. First, the, the whole process of the district improvement plan was done differently last time, in that it wasn't just presented to us in June for a discussion, one meeting, and vote the next. I mean, I believe we had four rather lengthy discussion check-ins during the year where we gave feedback in the, in the course of the process. You don't see this mirroring that?
No, I'm not saying that at all.
Okay.
I'm really talking broad picture, when it'll begin and when I intend to end it, but very much, I believe that we need to gather more input along the way. I had a conversation today with the president of PTA C, for example, PTAC, around their potential role in this, I've had conversations with the teachers' union around their potential role in this. Going forward, I want to work on developing student cadres to have a role in this. So, my intent would be that we So, my intent would be that we, as we get to that, I would certainly have a presentation to you on the plan, the development of the plan itself, the plan of the plan, as it were. Two, that I would give you critical junctures in that, feedback on where we are to gather the board's input on what the district improvement initiatives would be. And I think in this first year of the plan, what we're essentially going to need to identify in the second half of the year, excuse me, is, one, the broad strokes of what they look like, and then the individual yearly pieces that fill in those broad strokes. So, what the board will be looking at is that first broad stroke, the big ideas, as it were, I should say, and then what does that look like in 2021? As well as, as I've said to you, the budgetary implications for this in the ensuing years as we start to develop those figures so that you have that input as well. So, there's a, I think there's a role, certainly there's a role for the board in both the input of the plan and then the critical shaping of the plan.
Okay, that's what I wanted to check on. Then a couple of questions within the document that you provided on page five where it says implement newcomer English Language Academy. I thought we tried that and it was a bust.
Well, we keep trying it. We had a student this year that we were looking at moving, we actually still are looking in process of moving to Tomlinson Middle School. So, we have a student that we were going to see, there's interest in the student part, we want to see if we can make that happen. So, there's, it's not as, I think, a large net as initially was proposed by Dr. Jones, but we are looking to support students that way.
Okay. I was also, one thing I did not see in here was the idea coming out of the homework policy of the consistent practices and-
I thought I addressed that-
That specific idea I didn't see.
I thought I addressed that in, both with grading and homework. Maybe I just, yes, in the fourth bullet from the bottom on page six, examine grading practice and homework guidelines.
Okay, that's what captures it? Okay, thank you. On page six, that whole restructuring of the secondary PPT process, which, of course, we talked about last year, I believe we're implementing this year, are we going to be able to have feedback on that by budget time to have any sense of the investment?
You may get it right now.
Okay.
Hello, Rob Mancusi, Director of Special Education. Yes, you will. In fact, we just had a meeting today. We meet every Thursday with the initial evaluation team. Things are going as we had hoped and you will have an update at budget time.
Okay, thank you. And also on page seven where it says, update the Fairfield Public Schools waterfall schedule, I guess the facilities plan, I don't know, is that considered more of a Board of Ed document so that would not come under this?
I hadn't thought about it as exclusionary. I suppose I-
I didn't know if there was a reason, because we've been talking about the 10-year facilities plan needing updating in a variety of ways. I didn't, I don't view that as the same thing as the waterfall schedule, so I didn't know if that needed a separate bullet, if it's-
Well, and we didn't, as a board, decide that we were going to do that work of rewriting that plan this year. I think that we talked about needing to start the discussion.
Okay.
But I think that's a board, that we need to have a board discussion about what we, what work we think needs to be done and the best way to approach that. Mr. Asa brought up a committee, you know, to address it. Some of the work conversations are having at the finance committee. I think that once we get some information back about the HVAC consultant, might play into that also. So, before we delve into that, want to get a little bit more information.
But at the very least, on that idea of the waterfall schedule, because to Mrs. Gerber's point about dealing with financial numbers that are a decade at least old, that would at least happen regardless as part of that waterfall schedule review, correct?
That's happening now, yeah.
Great, all right, thank you.
I just have a question. On page five, train 25 faculty in cognitive coaching methods?
Yes.
Is that training done by staff in-house or do you bring out?
No, we'll be working with an outside provider around that.
Okay. And timing of, is that starting soon or-
It starts, I looked at my calendar, I believe it starts in November.
Okay.
Second week of November, I think.
Thank you. If anybody has any questions, you know, just email them to Mr. Cummings upon further review. Okay, first reading of CDC tobacco survey for FLHS grades nine through 12.
Good evening again. You had in your packet the survey that the CDC sent to Dr. Jones requesting, or telling us that they've chosen Fairfield Ludlow High School as the site to perform the survey for two classes per grade, nine, 10, 11, 12. I spoke to the CDC directly specifically because I had, I asked them, when was the last time a school in Fairfield was surveyed? And they said two years ago. Mr. Hatzis doesn't remember that happening at Ludlow, so I'm assuming it was either a middle school or the other high school award. CDC didn't have that answer, just that Fairfield was chosen two years ago. I remember having had to administer this in some of the high schools I've been in. I think the questions, having read through the survey, the questions are very similar. The only change I saw and recollect is the vaping questions because that is such a huge issue right now. So, it's a standard survey that I just didn't see any changes in the questions, other than the fact that it's now all online. A trained field specialist will be here to administer the test. They will bring the tablets for the students or the Chromebooks, whatever they're going to use. And Mr. Hatzis just has to choose the two ninth, 10th, 11th and 12th grade classes if you approve the survey.
Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I just have two questions. So, it says here that it would take one period-
Yes.
-for each class. Is that like a full period? You know, since our class, with the block schedule, that our classes are longer, so I didn't know if it actually would, you know, because for some schools, a full period's like 45 minutes, we have an 80 minute, so I just didn't know if that-
That's a good question. I didn't ask that question, but I can if you'd like me to find out.
Just kind of curious. And then I guess, too, just in terms of how will it be chosen, I guess, is that at Mr. Hatzis's discretion?
Yes, yes.
So, he'll find a class that it wouldn't be impacting in terms of the-
Yeah, for example, when I was a principal at a high school, we used our health classes.
Right.
But here, they, all of the students don't have health, they're on a quarterly basis or, so I don't know whether he's going to choose English or social studies, but he will determine the classes.
Okay. And then the other question I had is just, here it mentions the monetary award. Do you know how much?
No, I didn't ask that question because I never got it when we were-
Okay.
But I will. And they want them to really choose resources for classes, you know.
Right, no, no, I understand that.
I'll ask that for you.
I was just curious.
Yeah, it's a good question.
Okay, thanks.
That was my question, too. Hopefully, it's a decent amount and, you know, we could do some good programming with it.
I'll call tomorrow and find out.
So, like the RICEP survey, can parents opt their students to opt out?
I don't want to guess on that. I'll ask that question, too. I would like to think that, yes, they can, but if that's the, I did not see any opt-out letter to the parents in there. Is that there?
I think so. Oh, yeah. This form only needs to be signed and returned if you do not want it to-
Yes, 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 okay. I was looking at the, I thought the FAQs were pretty comprehensive for the parents as well, but you're right, this did say only if you want your child to opt out. Sorry about that.
Any other questions?
We're not saying yes to this until you give us approval. In fact, Mr. Hatzis is not going to call the rep until we hear from you.
Okay, and we'll put this on the next agenda for action.
Thank you.
First reading of the Board of Ed handbook, Mrs. Max Canelli?
It is perfect as is and does not need to be taught, no. This is something we've been working on in policy. I have lost track of how long. We picked it up over a year ago, put it down, picked it up again, spent hours on it. I promise you, every single time we open it, we find one more thing that we didn't catch the first time. But just, again, the basic intent behind this, this was first put together by Mr. Dwyer back in 2012, and it was the idea of a help guide to, it is not meant to direct Board of Ed members, it's meant to guide them. And that's why you're going to see that virtually everything in there is very carefully cited in terms of capturing from a wide variety of sources, you know, a helpful guide to Board of Ed members. We learn lots of new things every time we read it. I would encourage all of you to read it just from that perspective and then finally just seeking any clarification. We would love the feedback. We are meeting next Tuesday with policy, so if it were possible to get us questions, I did receive yours already, Ms. Vitali, I figure I won't answer them now, I can do them by email. And then if there's anything you'd like to bring up again, obviously, on the 22nd?
When did you want the question?
Tuesday? Only because the policy committee is meeting our regular schedule, so if we could have it by then, that way the policy committee can bring it up if need be. Obviously, otherwise, we just take care of it on October 22nd. So, thank you. And if obviously any questions now, I'd be happy to hear them.
Mrs. Gerber?
Not so much a question, but I guess just a comment, kind of question, is just, I've gone through this a few times and I'll go through it again, just, I haven't caught anything yet because I'm sure you guys have been checking a lot, but-
Oh, you will, you will.
Yeah, okay, well, we'll see. But in any event, I guess it's just important to note that all of the changes that have been made are really purely updates based on, you know, obviously with the mission and goals of the district, obviously.
There were some language choices-
Correct, no, I did notice-
Of recrafting things.
I did see that, but-
Commas, lots of comma issues.
The majority, the majority of the-
Yes.
-major changes, when you're looking at something like this, it has a lot of red, the reason why is because we changed the mission and goals.
Correct.
So, that's why that happened. Other things that were just, you know, added or subtracted in terms of the, you know, the meetings or, you know, different phrases and things like that. So, it's just updating the public comment by law, for example. So, these are all things that in the past seven years have been updated, so the majority of the changes here are updates based on changes to bylaws or policies.
Or policy numbers.
Right.
And it's absolutely, the majority, that said, there were absolutely also some judgment calls. And that's where, you know, if someone looking and saying, why did you take this out, it's because we decided to. And so, those would be things where if there's pushback, you know, maybe they do need to be reconsidered, but the vast majority are dictated actions.
Okay, thank you. Any other? Mr. Dwyer?
Yeah, being the original editor of the handbook, I would say you did a much better job of editing than I did.
Well, thank you.
It's a tighter document. I would say there have been no changes of substance. There have been technical changes because of votes that we've taken over since the thing was first written. The only thing I would appeal to you is give me the pleasure of being able to vote for its revision by the end of October for reasons that you all are aware. Thank you.
I hope so. I hope we are voting on this at the next meeting.
Anybody else? I'm going to ask our newer board members, just to think of when you were a new board member, is there anything that you wish that you knew? Or as you've, the first month, something came up and you're like, what's that? I think that might be valuable information to share with the policy committee. Mr. Peterson?
No, I was just, I was just going to say, Ms. Jacobson and I, as two-year veterans now, had a lot of perspective on exactly that sort of thing, like, this would have been awesome to know, this would, so, there are those bits in there.
Thank you for all your work on this. We'll try to get it approved at the next meeting so Mr. Dwyer can vote. Discussion of 2020-2021 BOA budget priorities. This is really just to get some, for staff, to really get some feedback from the board on next year's budget, if there's anything that you think that we should be focusing on, initial thoughts, any questions? Mrs. Gerber?
Well, two things, and I had mentioned this in an email in advance. One, I think just overall in terms of the whole air conditioning for the non-air-conditioned schools, just to get a sense of, you know, whatever we can do to start the ball rolling. I understand that it's not going to be a quick issue, but if we could just try to at least see what we can start to do to start to get those un-air-conditioned schools air-conditioned sooner than later. And then the other one was just that one specific issue, the Sturgis softball field. I know that it was on the list as a priority one, the list that we got during last year's budget season, so I just was curious to see if, in fact, that is going to be in this year's budget as of now, perhaps? So, thanks.
So, through Mr. Cummings to Mr. Papa George, just to start the HVAC, I know that town purchasing, you know, is very backed up, they were close to possibly moving forward on that?
We actually have a rough draft for an RFP to go out. Gerald and I will be meeting next week to finalize it and then it will go out.
Okay, thank you. And I'll let you, if you have any information on the field?
Both softball fields are in the, on the number one list for this coming summer. I did meet, however, with Parks and Recreation Department and Todd Parnez, the AD from Ludlow, and looking at the Roger Ludlow Middle School backfield, they are, the Parks and Rec is planning to put forward a plan, bless you, to turf that backfield area. And in doing so, the discussion today was, do we turf a softball field in the back area as well as two soccer fields back there? So, that may come up as a plan, which would mean we would not move forwards with the Ludlow High School softball field if we were going to get a turf field for them in the back.
I'm sorry, so when you say in the back, you mean the field behind Roger Ludlow Middle School?
Behind Roger Ludlow Middle School, yes.
That would be two soccer fields and a softball field?
It could definitely be possible. We're looking at layouts today and measurements, so there is some potential back there to do a softball field with two soccer fields. One would be usable during softball games, you would have enough room to have a soccer game-
Okay, but not two soccer fields.
But not soccer games going on at the same time, no.
I think that would be a recipe for disaster, yeah.
No, we'd have to take one soccer field out of play to use the softball side.
Got it, okay. So, and that's something that Mr. Calabrese is going to be, I know, I'm on the Parks and Rec Commission, so he had mentioned that he was hoping to, you know, float the idea of turf fields, but I guess the question is, with the timing, when would, he would be bringing that to the first selectmen's office?
He met with the first selectman and it was the first selectman who recommended Roger Ludlow Middle School as opposed to-
Sturgis?
Not Sturgis, Sullivan, I'm sorry.
Right.
Yes, thank you. So, he will, he's putting together numbers for his budget right now. He said he, once he has those finalized, he's actually going to ask to come before you guys for support on that.
Okay.
So, he will be asking-
But just, I guess, the question is, so if on the off chance that that falls through, I think we usually vote on the Parks and Rec budget in December.
Yep.
So, would then-
Still on a priority list for us.
The Sturgis, then be able to flip back to, so there maybe like be a placeholder, and then if it turns out that the turf moves forward, then you'd be able to take something below the list on that and move it up and the timing would work out, okay?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Ms. Jacobson?
Sorry, just to back up, is there a reason why they wouldn't want to just leave this softball field where it was? Is there a particular reason why that's attractive as a change?
It was the AD who brought it up, so I'm not sure what his thinking on it was, other than, I think, a little closer to the school itself. I think it's about the same, if you ask me if you're walking from one to the other, but it was something he actually brought up and asked if it would be possible.
Okay, I was just curious, as a backup, sorry.
Anybody else?
Well, I have, oh, okay.
Ms. Jacob?
Were you done? Okay. I had sent these as well. I had a time to make, but I just wanted, for the benefit of you guys and the public, just piggybacking on the district improvement plan, I had just sent an idea that if there was going to be anything needed in the budget for year one implementation or development would be one area. I also said, I'm not really sure what's becoming effective next year or in, during fiscal year 21 from the state, but just to ensure that we have a good eye on anything that will be becoming effective during fiscal year 21, make sure that we have the funding for it if it's a new requirement. for it, if it's a new requirement. Again, not sure if it's going to be needed, but following any conversations that we have from Malone and McBroom in fiscal year '20, if we anticipate any budgetary follow-up needs in fiscal year '21 that may be needed. I also had the A.C. consultant work and where we are with that piece. I also have a request that I asked Mr. Cummings for, for us, in terms of unbudgeted emergency repairs, and that I think that it would be important for this body, for us to, as part of our budgetary process, get a trending analysis, because that information kind of doesn't live anywhere right now, and so I was interested in getting, I don't know, I don't want to create a lot of work, but over time, a longitudinal view of how that, those dollars are trending. We already have last year, because Dr. Jones had sent it to the Board of Finance, we obviously, this year shouldn't be too difficult, so if we could get a few more years behind that, I think it would be important for us to start getting a better handle on how that's trending. And then, oh, and then the last thing was, is that, I think I've mentioned this before, that you might be aware of, but I asked Mr. Cummings if we could include an IT security audit in the fiscal year '21 budget.
And we've already discussed the Finance Committee about keeping the master list of just unexpected maintenance and reporting more regularly to the Board of Finance, just so they're aware of what's coming up over the course of the year. Does anybody else have anything else to add to this? Ms. Maxine Caneli?
Well, actually, Mrs. Jacobson said all of mine, but I did want to piggyback on that idea. I actually think it's worth a page in the budget book and a slide in the PowerPoint of just understanding what kind, you know, how movable, how flexible that our budget has had to be, that these things have come up, and that things have been left off the list accordingly. Again, I still have certain issues about that $600,000, because there's a lot we could have done with it that we had gotten approval for, but I just wanted to reiterate my support for that idea as well.
Anybody else? Mr. Papa George, do you have any other maintenance projects that you're, you have your eye on for next budgets?
We've put together a list of number-one priorities, I can get it out to the board if they'd like to.
And that would be helpful, I know that it does change based on need. Let's see my list. The board got a memo from Mr. Cummings about, actually, from Mr. Papa George, about the move of the maintenance facility. We discussed this in executive session, but now that we are moving forward, I just wanted to, you know, bring it to the public record. So, Mr. Cummings, can you, and Mr. Papa George, can you give us a brief update on where we are on this?
I can. I believe as, when I spoke to Mr. Papa George this morning about this, we're on, we're expecting the lease, I think, still tomorrow, is that correct?
Yes, they've promised by the end of the week. They did have a holiday in there, so we're still hopeful for tomorrow.
So we're at that point where we, we have a, expect the lease tomorrow, we have a Board of Selectmen meeting now set for the 21st at 3:00 p.m., that we can bring this forward as an agenda item, although the agenda item, the agenda for that meeting has not yet been produced. So, that's essentially where we are, I don't know if you've got anything more than that.
At this time, no, we're just waiting on the draft lease to come through, so we can get it over to the town's attorney to review.
So, this lease needs to be approved first by the Board of Selectmen, and then by the RTM. I'm having this discussion here as part of the budget priorities, because we were forwarded the moving expenses for the, which we are going to be going to the town for assistance with. I asked if there is, Ms. Munzel has any, or if there could be any sort of projections for what the impact would be to our operating budget moving forward, being that we are moving to a bigger space, while the price for the square footage is less, the rent is not the same. I don't know if you have any preliminary numbers on that, or...
We do. If you want to come forward, Ms. Munzel. Ms. Munzel's done a little work around determining what the budget impact would be, if we're able to go forward with the lease.
These are very fluid numbers, but if we, if you base a comparison on what we're actually paying right now, take into consideration moving, transportation together, not paying the heating, the electrical at, at the bus lot, the storage that we wouldn't have to pay, the estimate's about $30,000, 30, between $30,000, $35,000 extra it would cost us. There's an estimate in there from the owner, the, what they budgeted for utilities, we have no idea if that's what our cost would be. We do have the possibility that contractually, the lease has lapsed, and the rate could be much more.
Okay. Ms. Asa?
Can you clarify, that's for our existing?
Existing.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions about this? The memo went out to all town bodies, so as Mr. Cummings said, we are on the Board of Selectmen agenda for 3:00 on October 21st, for them to review the lease and hopefully approve it, so we can move forward. Ms. Jacobson, do you have a...
Sorry, just, have you had preliminary conversations about the town helping with the move piece of this yet, or is that all going to be happening at that meeting?
I've not had that conversation yet, I have a phone call in, but we've not yet connected.
Okay, okay, thank you.
It was included in the memo, though, just in terms of, in terms of the moving cost. Nothing really has gone forward in terms of other conversations. We, you know, had our discussions in executive session about the negotiations and the lease. I want to bring it to the public, just, and for the board, just get a sense of the body, we're not going to vote on this, that we're, everyone is still comfortable moving forward to the other town bodies. If there's any objections, I would like you to speak now. Mr. Asa?
Not an objection, I just want to thank Mr. Papa George and Mr. Cummings for pursuing this. I'm not sure if everybody in the public is aware, I know Ms. Vitale said that the memo went out to town bodies, and it was just mentioned by Ms. Munzel about the bus lot and storage, but just to be clear, I don't know if Chair, you would like to just give a brief summary of exactly what's being said, so the public knows, or if you'd like me to elaborate on it.
Just for the public's sake, a quick recap, we currently, our maintenance facility is at Meadow Street. It is owned now, that building, by Julian Enterprises. Julian was not the owner of that property, when we entered into the lease, the owner switched mid-lease. The lease was up for approval this past spring. It went before the RTM at the end of June. It was approved to move forward, pending Board of Selectmen approval. Once things progressed over the summer, the Board of Selectmen voted not to renew for a 10-year lease. We are at the point right now that we are going month-to-month with the current Meadow Street lease. That lease has the potential, the rate, to double at any time. So for these reasons, we did not think that it was, well, we and the town did not think that it was advantageous for us to stay in this relationship. In looking at other properties, a property was located that is larger, 13, around, roughly 13,000 square feet, which will enable us to have offices for our maintenance department, the carpentry shop, it'll also enable us to take our transportation department, which right now is in a trailer, which is very close to needing to be repaired, down on Richard White, what is it, what is it called now, One Right Way? That trailer also is in need of a new heater for roughly $11,000. Hopefully, we will be able to move and not have to bear that expense. We are also, right now, have storage in Fairfield Ward High School, we're paying for additional storage, that will go away, we will now be able to use this new location to be the storage facility for the district. Am I leaving anything out?
No, I think you covered it very well, thank you. And just, I think the public can understand, and I think there's, so they know the consolidation of three entities into one location was attractive. And, like I said, to start out, I'd just like to thank our executive operator, executive director of operations, our real estate, commercial real estate agent, and all the parties involved for doing their due diligence. And even when we saw this property, other properties were still being explored and looked at and brought to us, but at the end of the day, this one seemed to make the most sense.
And I do want to reiterate, I know that there was, this property is located on Fairfield Avenue in Bridgeport, it's not in Fairfield. That was, you know, ideally, it would have been wonderful if we could have stayed in town. Mr. Papa George did, when a new property came up that, you know, seemed like it might be a possibility, he did go and check it out, and really, nothing really fit our needs. Thankfully, the location in Bridgeport is right over the Fairfield border, so it's really, I mean, in some instances, I think it might be closer to some elementary schools than Meadow Street. Just to refresh the board's memory, when Mr. Cullen was looking for, because this is not a new, you know, we've been looking for alternate locations for this facility for quite some time, when Mr. Cullen did the work, a lot of locations that were identified in Bridgeport were on the eastern border of Bridgeport, so it really, it would have added a lot of travel time for our staff, we would not have been able to be responsive if there was an emergency in one of the school buildings, so we're really thankful that we were able to find a location, and hopefully, other town bodies will support it. Mr. Asa?
And, Mr. Papa George, can you just explain our current situation, taking everything out of, you know, play? What is our current situation at Meadow Street as far as capacity and our current size and utilization, et cetera?
I think the easy way to say it is, we are busting at the seams over there. When we first moved into Meadow Street, which is approximately 6,000 square feet, we also had three bays at DPW that we operated out of, and also, we had storage areas at the state-owned garage in town. So, we've lost the three bays, we've been moved down to a small section of one bay, and we've lost the state garage storage facility because of the facility itself. So, things have been just being jammed into the maintenance department over the last few years.
So you would say that regardless of how this came about, it's something that would have been on the radar and needed to be addressed?
Yes.
You know, down the road?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions about budget priorities? No. And you could just throw that list to the board for, right now, your priority one. Thank you, Ms. Munzel. Approval of minutes, that the Board of Education approved the September 24th, 2019 special meeting minutes. Could a motion? Ms. Picko, seconded by Mrs. Gerber, all in favor? Ms. Picko, Ms. Lieber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Ms. Jacobson, Mr. Peterson, all opposed? Abstentions? Mrs. Maxine Caneli, just a reminder, she was not at that meeting. So, motion passes?
8:01.
8:01. Superintendent's report, Mr. Cummings?
Just a couple of quick things. One is, a notice was just sent out to all parents through Infinite Campus, it spoke to, spoke to a couple of things. One was the way we're going to be using Infinite Campus to message. It's really important that parents update their contact information, as always in Infinite Campus, if they've not done that. But essentially, we've got four types of messages, informational messages, weather alert messages, alerts, and then emergency messages. I am in the process of working on a memo to the schools, asking them to follow very similar processes and headings in their own messages, as well as including the school that is issuing the message, and the person, and the title of the person who might be actually sending that message. That's been an issue that's been raised by parents in the community. If you've got children at multiple levels, it may be confusing when you get the message, what the message is about. So being as clear and upfront about what the message is and its title, as well as making sure that there's clear indication of who the message, what school the message is coming from, and who at the school is sending the message. So, again, the, if people have not updated their information, their contact information, I would strongly encourage folks to do that. That's one thing. And the other thing, of course, is, I think, as by now, most everybody has heard, but I certainly don't want to let the opportunity to talk about it go by, the Nobel Prize in Medicine was awarded to one of our own graduates, going back a number of years, but still, one of our graduates, going back a number of schools, as a matter of fact, to Roger Ledlow High School, but William Kaelin, and I've heard two dates for graduation, I've heard '74 and '75. Either way, it was the '70s. And he was awarded the Nobel, he currently works at Harvard and at Dana Farber Cancer Institute, which just does such tremendous work, particularly in the lives of children. But he was awarded the, with two other men, for their work in covering and discovering how cells regulate the production of oxygen, which was groundbreaking and foundational work. So, as a community, not only as a community, but as a public school system, that's just got to be one of the greatest recognitions that can fall on any, any one of our graduates. So, I just wanted to make notice of that, if you've not heard, it's a story well worth pursuing. And I, Mr. Hattis is rightfully very proud, even though it's no longer Roger Ledlow High School. But he's right, he was rightfully very proud, and he sent out an email today, there was a report, a television report, do you remember what that was, what that was broadcast?
Channel 12.
Oh, Channel 12, where Dr. Kaelin spoke about the fact that, two things that were of significance to us. One, he was a late bloomer, all right, he was a late bloomer, he was not, he did not identify anyway as one of those students that everybody thought was going to win the Nobel Prize. Secondly, he spoke about the importance of critical thinking and developing critical thinking in students. It's not about the content knowledge, but it's about the ability to take the information you have and think critically about it. So, it spoke to, I couldn't help but hear his words and think, vision of the graduate, all right? So, anyway, that was it. Thank you.
Is Mr. Hattis going to try to reach out to him, for him to come and visit?
I think he'd like to, I think he'd like to get his autograph. I know that there's, there's some talk in town of trying to do something for Dr. Kaelin. I understand his family no longer lives in town, none of his, members of his family still live in town, but certainly, I think if we can do that, we would, we would definitely do that. It would be a great inspiration to see him visit our science classrooms.
Okay, committee liaison reports, does anybody, Ms. Picko?
Septa report. Their next meeting is Wednesday, October 30th, it is at 7:30, and is going to be, all the Board of Ed candidates are going to come, and there'll be a forum. They're having, it's called "Let's Talk", Family Communication for Special Needs Families with Inspire Inc., Thursdays, October 17th to November 21st, from 7:30 to 9:00 p.m., Fairfield Ledlow High School. It's a free, Septa-sponsored parent workshop. They're hosting Halloween hijinks, Saturday, October 26th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. It's going to be with Double Up Dance, which is now on Black Rock Turnpike, it's open to all children and their families. Septa's also hosting Presto Pizza with Vita Pasta Lab, it's going to be at the American Legion Hall, where students can come and make homemade pizza. They're hosting another Pasta Pizzazz with Vita. This one's going to be at Burr Elementary School on November 15th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. It is limited to 10 students, so first 10 that sign up for that one. And it doesn't say where the October 30th meeting is, if it's at McKinley or Ledlow, those are typically the two that it...
I think it's at McKinley.
It's McKinley.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Lieber?
In the Finance Committee, we've started very preliminary discussions on the idea of a non-recurring fund. So, many, many communities in Connecticut take advantage of a non-recurring fund, which allows for up to 2% of your budget that you don't spend to remain in this fund, as an idea of something to help offset emergency facility expenditures that pop up. So, again, this is very preliminary discussion, there would need to be lots of detail still ironed out, and if you have any thoughts on this topic or feedback, we would love to hear it.
Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I didn't attend the Mill Hill Building Committee meeting, because it conflicted with something else, but I did just today receive the minutes for that meeting, and just two things of note. First, in some preliminary work, it was discovered that there are some sewer lines under this school that are in really poor shape. And so, some work will need to be done with that. Mr. Quinn has been talking to the First Selectmen and WPCA, and the hope is that this will be a WPCA project and not a building project project. So... So, because basically, if it was to go under the building committee's purview, they would have to go back to the town to ask for more money. So, but, but if one does have to go back to ask for more money, this is certainly something that is absolutely understandable. But the hope is that, I guess in the conversations with WPCA, that they would be able to take it on. So, that's, you know, they're aware of it, and there are some preliminary talks in place. The other thing is just that they broke out four phases for the project as of now. They are still on track to begin construction July of 2020, and that will be the first part, the beginning of Phase 1, and the end of Phase 4 will be November of 2021. So, that is the goal as of now, and obviously, it will be an occupied renovation, very similar to, I believe, to what happened at Holland Hill. And so, that's where they are right now, and I'm not sure if we're going to be meeting next week or the week after, because yesterday's meeting was, didn't take place because of Yan Kapoor. So, if I'm unable to attend, Mrs. Vitale or Mr. Asa's going to go in my place, just to get any updates on that sewer line issue.
Any other county reports? Mr. Peterson?
So, the last Board of Finance meeting, I'm sure by now you've all read about that. Largest topic there was transfers to set money aside for possible fillpile expenses. And just to add, I was at Holland Hill Building Committee tonight from 7:00. I went and I asked Mr. Quinn. I said, "I have to come here by 7:30. Can you make the meeting 20 minutes?" And we were out of there at 7:15. I honor that man. Not much is going on there. They got a bunch of new doors. There's some issues about water and electrical meters, but otherwise cafeteria tables. And one budget transfer had to be made, because there was an overage of 16 cents in one bill, so it's really, final touches there.
Okay. Open board comment?
Only one, one comment.
Yes?
The discussion of the Nobel Prize winner. We have a lot of award cases that talk about sports stars who have gone on and won golf tournaments and this, that, and the other thing. But in our vision of a graduate, it goes beyond just sports stars, and I'm wondering if, if the administration would want to give thought to some display that says, "Here's where our graduates have ended up," whether it's in arts and entertainment, or whether it's in medicine, or wherever it is. It might be a very interesting display that goes beyond sports.
Great idea. Ms. Picko?
I just came back from a four-day niask at Bolton High School, and it was very fascinating to see every different facet of a high school, and myself and 11 other people sit in a room for four days and write this 100-page report on a, on a high school. It was very rewarding.
Any others? Public comment? Any members of the public like to come forward? Please state your name and address for the record, and just a reminder, we have a three...
Good evening. My name's Greg Bosch. I live at 470 Jackman Ave. We were told that there are some exceedances of RDEC. There are exceedances of Connecticut commercial and industrial remediation standards as well. We were told that there are rubber mats under swings. There are no swings at Stratfield. We were told exceedances are explained by pressure-treated lumber and tires. Now, the answer is asphalt. We were told there is a rubber membrane between the soil and wood chip mulch. There is no rubber membrane. We were told Stratfield Elementary's playground could open. Now, it might need remediation. This evening, what wasn't talked about is what is known as Title 22A-133K. This is published by Connecticut Department of Environmental Protection. It is the owner's manual for what you do to remediate soil. We all need to go read it. It says residential activity means any activity related to, and I'll say dot, 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 schools, hospitals, daycare centers, playgrounds, or outdoor recreational areas. That's what invokes RDEC. And that inaccessible soil means polluted soil, which is more than four feet below ground surface. Ms. Harvey's own letter says that there is only one to two feet of mulch. I would ask this board, go back to your LEP, please ask them, even if we do not enter volunteer remediation, what would it look like for this playground? What would the Department of Environmental Protection ask us to do for Stratfield? Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair? Can you email the board that, whatever that section is, please?
Seeing no other members of the public, motion to adjourn. Ms. Leeper, seconded by Mr. Peterson, all in favor? Mr. Dwyer, do you want to adj-
I'm adjourned.
It's unanimous. We are adjourned.